Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tobin Jackson is the pastor at Trinity Baptist Church, Northwest 23rd and Classen. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Father, thank you for today. Father, a day that you set aside for your purpose. And Father, in this time of meeting, God of business, God of conversation, Father, I pray that you are honored with all that is said and all that is done. Father, please lead and guide this council. Father, lead and guide our mayor. Father, as we proceed to carry out, God, the plans that you've laid before them and before us, God, help us to lift them up in prayer, Father, faithfully. Thank you for the blessing of being able to be part of a great, great city, Father. Thank you for Oklahoma City. Father, there's not another place that I would rather be, Father, and we are here because we love and cherish where we live, Father. Help us to honor it, God, by honoring you, Father, by pleading and praying, Father, for it in your name. Father, thank you for our time today together. Thank you for this great leadership before us. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice
I'd ask Doug Cooper to come forward. It is a night of ghosts and goblins coming up in Oklahoma City. On Monday, October 31st, we'll have Trick or Treat Night in Oklahoma City. And we officially sanction that and try to give some instructions to our citizens about how they should prepare and leave the porch light on if they'd like to participate and ask the children to only go to those homes where the porch light is on. And we do put out a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and I have Doug Cooper, who runs our Parks Department here, and kind of oversees the city's efforts in this regard.
Whereas Halloween is a time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghost goblins and strange and mysterious creatures. Whereas our city's children celebrate Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional holiday treats. The annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. Whereas it is important to our community that children be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety of the children and protect the rights of homeowners. Now, therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Monday, October 31st, as Trick or Treat Night in Oklahoma City. And he encourages children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of activities to the afternoon and early evening hours. That households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch and exterior lights. That youngsters only call on homes so lighted. And he asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
All right, let's hear it for Trick or Treat Night in Oklahoma City. And I'll let Doug add on to the comments I made earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We're having an exciting weekend. I know that it culminates on Monday, 31st, and we want the kids to go out and be safe. But the Parks -- excuse me. Parks and Recreation Department's also celebrating it with activities at Will Rogers in the afternoon. We've got Trick or Treat activities out in the gardens at Will Rogers this weekend, Saturday afternoon. So if you have nothing else to do, you come out and enjoy the outdoors and do some activities with our folks at Will Rogers. Then that evening, at Martin Park on the north side of town, we're actually guiding some walking tours and teaching the kids about bats and snakes and nighttime critters that live in our city. So they start at 6:30 in the evening out at Martin Park, and they go out every 15 minutes. And it's appropriate for age groups six and older out there at Martin Park. But again, the main thing is get out and trick or treat safely with your children on Monday evening and enjoy yourselves. It's a great opportunity for the family to come together. Thank you.
Absolutely. We love to get people outside Oklahoma City doing wholesome activities. A couple other things. Pumpkinville is going on at the myriad Botanical Gardens. And if you've never been to Pumpkinville, you've never seen so many pumpkins in your life. So it's just a couple of blocks from here. Great opportunity to come down and enjoy downtown Oklahoma City. And I think tonight in Bricktown is Brick or Treat, in which kids can come down, you know, holding a receptacle like that, and go into the restaurants. And all of the retail vendors in Bricktown hand out candy, obviously free, to the kids. So if you're driving through Bricktown tonight, you might be frightened by what you see. But we would love to have, you know, more people down there and enjoying everything Oklahoma City has to offer. And, you know, in late October, the weather is not always this good. And so we ought to take advantage of it as long as we can. Doug, we appreciate what you do for the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more round of applause for Doug and the Parks Department and what they I also like to note, as we get started, we have some visitors from France that are here today. We have some foreign exchange students. Would you all stand so we can get a good look at you? How about a round of applause to welcome our visitors? They've been here for a couple of weeks and have seen the sights and sounds of Oklahoma City. I got to visit with them this morning. They speak better English than I do. I was very impressed. And they come from all over the nation of France. Some from Paris, some from the west coast, and all the way over to the east coast. It's great to have you all in town, and we know when you go back to France, you're going to say nice things about it and bring back more people next time you return. So thanks very much for coming, and we enjoy your stay. All right, let's get started then with the meeting. We'll start with item 3A, which is an appointment. Couple of appointments to the Bond Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for October 11th, and 4B is to approve the journal for September 27th and October 4th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item five is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's several this morning, starting with the one listed on the agenda, which is item 9A2, which will be deferred until November 22nd. And then moving to page 17, item 9E, which is the Mustang deannization petition. The applicants requesting to deferral of this item until November 22nd. So again, that's on page 17, 9E. And then on page 19, under 9H1B, 1100 Denmark Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item D, 300 Northeast 3rd Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 329 Southwest 26th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 20, item P, 2107 Southwest 55th Street, we ask that be stricken. Owner has secured. Under item 9I1A, 1100 Denmark, we ask that be stricken. Owner secured. Item D, 300 Northeast 3rd Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H, 329 Southwest 26th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item N, 2107 Southwest 55th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then on page 21, item 9M1 and 2, we'd like to strike that item, 9M1 and 2. We'll prepare a new item for that for November 8th.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we have some revocable permit requests. The first is a request from the American Cancer Society to hold an event called Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. Is there anyone here representing the American Cancer Society? Ashley?
Yes, good morning.
Yeah, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ashley Bowlin, and the address is 6525 North Meridian Avenue.
All right.
Our event is a non-competitive 5K that will be over in Oklahoma City's Adventure District. We utilize Northeast 50th, Remington Place, and part of Grand Boulevard for our event, and this is the second year.
Wonderful. And how can people sign up?
They can go online to our website, makingstrideswalk.org, or register the day of the event. There is no registration fee.
All right. Great opportunity to draw attention to the fight against cancer, and it's in Ward 7. John?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next is a request with the Capitol Hill Main Street, Inc., to hold the Haunt the Hill, and this would be on Halloween night. Anyone here representing Capitol Hill Main Street?
It doesn't look like there is anyone here. I want to move approval. Before I do that, I want to talk about the open streets that was on, from the bridge, the Robinson Bridge, all the way to 29th Street this weekend. It was lots of people, lots of activity. It's just a really growing -- it's the second year for it. It's probably twice as many people there Sunday as had been on the first one. Just a really alive kind of an opportunity, and I suspect this will be the same thing.
Yeah, you know, I think it's a good opportunity also just to remind ourselves. The City-County Board of Health goes above and beyond.
Absolutely.
You know, doing what they could be doing, or some would say should be doing. I mean, they're getting thousands of people out in South Oklahoma City to celebrate, you know, a beautiful day like that.
Right.
I just, I think how far that organization has come, and I just kind of want to keep encouraging them, so I try to draw attention when I'm proud of what they do.
Well, there was dancing and games for kids to play, and it was just, it was impressive to see that many people out in South Oklahoma City. I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 6B. Passage unanimously. And so Haunt the Hill will be on Halloween night, and that'll be on Southwest 25th Street between Hudson and Robinson. So you're encouraged to get out and trick or treat in Capitol Hill Monday night. Item 6C is a right-of-way permit with the Professional Basketball Club to hold Thunder Alley. Anybody here representing Thunder? Blake, come on up.
Billy Baratas, 208 Thunder Drive. We provide an opportunity for fans to come before the game, three hours. We're doing it for 14 events this year, Friday, Saturdays, and Sunday games. It's free and open to the public. We have inflatables. We have opportunities for kids to do basketball games, shootarounds, and play games. Whether people come to the game or not, they can come to it, so we want to encourage people to be a part of that. And it is located on North Reno, in between E.K. Gaylord and Onork.
Wonderful. We're all excited about the season. Kind of remind us, though, the first road, first game is a road game.
Yes, sir.
And that is, what, tomorrow night?
Yes.
Is that right? And then the first home game is Friday night.
Friday, the 28th.
And then there's another game Sunday.
30th.
Yeah, with, at 6 o'clock. So if you're not attending in person or not coming down to Thunder Alley, you can watch it on television as we kind of see this new roster and what they have to offer.
Should be very exciting.
Yeah, I think people are really anxious, probably the best word, anxious to see what this team looks like. Blake, thanks for everything Thunder does for Oklahoma City. Is there a motion?
No.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll assess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there's eight items in the MFA. Is there a motion? All right. Any comments or questions on the MFA? Cast your votes then. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, four items on the PPA.
Okay.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, any individual considerations on the consent docket? All right, well, let's vote then.
Mayor, I would ask that item 7E be struck at this time. There's a couple of errors in the memo, and so we'll bring that back next council meeting, so that would be 7E.
All right, so I'll take that motion and second to exclude item 7E, which is being struck from the agenda. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes, and the consent docket passes unanimously. Brings us on to the concurrence docket. Looks like a lot of, a lot of things from the Water Department.
Yes.
And some more sculptures coming on the canal. Any, is there any comments or questions on the concurrence? Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And that moves us to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 1101 Northwest 11th Street. Is anyone here representing this effort in Ward 6?
I don't, I'm sorry, Mayor. I've got laryngitis this morning, so I apologize. I don't see if the applicant's here, but this is an application for 1101 Northwest 11th Street area that is extremely interesting and being developed very quickly. There was no protest and unanimous approval by the planning departments. I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9A2 has been deferred until November 22nd. So if you showed up for item 9A2, you should know it won't be heard until November 22nd. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 6200 Northwest 164th Street. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become R1 single-family. Mark?
Yes, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. Sorry. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It went before the Planning Commission. There were no objections or protests at that time. It passed unanimously. I know of no one in opposition side moved for its approval, please.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A3? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1701 Northwest 4th Street. It's currently R2 medium-low residential. It would become I2 moderate industrial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, Meg?
Applicant not here. All righty, this also was, there were no protests at the Planning Commission. 1701 Northwest 4th Street is the location, basically, right at Maine and Klein. It's also a very exciting area on the west side of downtown. My Commissioner, Blake, made the motion. It was unanimously approved. I would ask for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 2835 Northwest 40th Street. It's R1 single-family residential, and it would become an O1 limited office district. Ed?
If nobody signed up to speak, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 10015 North Lindsay Avenue. It's in a planned unit development right now, and it would become R1 single-family if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Anyone signed up? I, the Planning Commission did approve this item on August 25th. With that saying, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is also in Ward 7 at 2609 North Bartel Road. It's currently I1 light industrial and I2 moderate industrial, and it would become an R2 medium-low residential district if approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Anyone signed up to speak? The Planning Commission did approve this item on September 22nd. I do want to point out that this property is in the northeast Renaissance Tiff District. As you see, it is currently zoned I1 and I2, and their plan, of course, is to turn it to single-family housing for future residential development. So again, this is in the northeast Renaissance area, so we do have movement happening in that particular area. With that said, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 116 North Klein Avenue. It's currently I2 moderate industrial and R3 medium density, and it would become a new spud if approved. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, Meg?
I don't see the applicant's here again today, so this is, as you said, Mayor, to create a multi-use development. There were a couple of TEs. And Bob, did they accept all of the TEs?
Yes.
All righty. Given that, I would move approval, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 2728 North Classen Boulevard. It's got a series of designations now, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Ed?
One signed up to speak. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A9. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's on South Check Hall Road, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Larry?
Yes, does anybody sign up to speak? Is the applicant present? Let's see. You want to come forward and just give the council a quick overview of the intent of this, Mark, if you would?
Mark Grubbs grabs consulting, 1819 South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant. The property is currently zoned RMH1. We're rezoning it to a single-use SPUD for senior independent living. We worked with the Planning Commission's staff on the TEs and just asked for your approval.
There were no protests at Planning Commission. It was approved unanimously. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A10. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A11 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1356 Southeast 42nd Street. It's currently R1 single-family and would be put into a new spud if approved. John?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You sound like Superman was coming. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, but the Planning Commission did approve this item with TEs. And did the applicant agree to the TEs?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 9A11, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward 2. The address is 5829 Northwest Grand Boulevard, and it's currently inside of a simplified planned unit development and a pud, and it would be all put into a new spud if approved. Ed?
Has anybody signed up? I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A12, and it passes unanimously. Item 9B is a zoning case in Ward 3 that was recommended for denial at the Planning Commission. It's at 9300 Southwest 44th Street. It's a pud, and it would be put into a new planned unit development if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak? This was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission, so because of that, I'm going to move that it be approved. I'd like David to come forward and give a little history on this. It's got an interesting history.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Jason Spencer, who's the civil engineer on this project. When you look at the map before you, the original PUD that we got approved several years ago, we originally wanted more R1ZL. We backed off of that request because we had some protesters to the south. It was one family that owned four large homes on a large 80-acre tract. There've been some significant developments since that was approved. One, we have a new comp plan. Two, maybe more importantly, is the Turnpike. The Turnpike now runs about 250 feet south of our southern border, and what that did was all of the folks that protested us originally have actually been bought out by the Turnpike. So there is no longer any protest, and when you think of what land use you might see around Turnpikes, it's usually higher density. So what we seek to do now is what we wanted to do originally because we now have no protests. The comprehensive plan is fully supportive of this application. We would ask for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
What was the Planning Commission's issue? I mean, it makes sense, you know, when I'm listening to David talk, but there's got to be another side of the story.
Sure. They, they didn't like it the first go-around when we came in with PUD 1488, and primarily they didn't like it back then because there was protest. And at the Planning Commission on this application, some of the comments were, "We didn't like it back then, and we still don't like it now."
Okay. Based on the map, it looks like the density is less where you're rezoning it than where, than the, than the old one.
We are, what we seek to do in this, it's a total, the overall net density only increases by 28 lots.
Okay.
And it's consistent with what you see east of county line and north of county line, which is why the comp plan is supportive.
Okay. Larry, you want to make a motion?
Can I just, I mean, do you agree that's what the Planning Commission, their...
I think their concern was that they didn't see a reason to change the density. The, the difference is really, the existing PUD allows for 6,000 square-foot lots. This goes to 4,000 square-foot lots, so that's the primary change.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9C is a name change in Ward 7. We're going to take Nantucket Road for a few blocks and change it to Branch Road. John, you okay with this?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission did approve this name change, and the reason why we are, the applicant is requesting a name change is to honor the former president of Oklahoma Christian University, and I do see the applicant being present. But again, the Planning Commission did approve, so with that said, I move for approval.
Okay, and it looks like the street's on kind of the northern border of the university.
That is correct.
Based on the signage. Okay, looks appropriate to me. You made a motion. Is there a second? Everybody ready to vote? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is up for the third time, so this is the final hearing. Wiley introduced it a few weeks back and has to do with our retirement and the method of determining the amounts of contributions. Is there anyone here that hopes to speak on this item today? All right, Wiley, do you have anything new to add, or are you just here to answer questions?
I just want to be sure that you agree at the end, after you pass it, to pass it with an emergency because it needs to be in effect by the 31st of this month.
Okay.
So we need the emergency.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So now we're voting on the ordinance, and it passes unanimously. And is there a motion on the emergency? Okay, cast your votes, and the emergency passes as well. Item 9E has been deferred. This is the issue of annexation that's south of Mustang. I don't remember the new date for this.
November 22nd.
November 22nd is the new date for item 9E. All right, we'll move on to item 9F, and this begins a series of items that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. We'll start in Ward 7. This has to do with a parking space on East Sheridan. John?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9F2, again, is a parking issue on, it looks like in Bricktown. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And another parking issue in Bricktown, 9F3. Joe, John, you want to make a motion?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Then we move over to Ward 2, and we have some parking issues, a series of them here, so I guess we'll take them pretty quickly unless there's a comment from somebody. 9F4. Ed, you want to make a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9F5?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9A6?
Move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F7?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F8?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F9?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F10?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9F11?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And finally, item 9F12?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion?
Move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there a motion here?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding the removal of properties from the abandoned buildings list. Is there a motion? Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9K would establish some new criteria for our employees, and perhaps more importantly, our retirees, and Craig Freeman has a presentation, and we have some people who have signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item before you today is, has a proposal. It's one resolution that has two proposals regarding eligibility for retiree health insurance. And I want to point out before I start on the resolution, there was one Scrivener's error that was identified where we had a date incorrect. Let me just point you to that. It's on page 8 of 10 of And that is under number 5 on page 8. It says those employees of the city or participating public trusts hired before January 1, 2016, and that should be 2017, just to be consistent with all the other dates that we have in there. So just wanted to make sure we have that correction in there before we move forward with it.
Okay.
All right. So what we have before you today are two proposals regarding eligibility for retiree health insurance, and this is referred to often as other post-employment benefits. There are several different types of benefits. It can be other post-employment benefits, and it's generally benefits that are not, they're other than pension benefits. And for the city, the only benefit that we have like this, that we subsidize, is retiree health insurance. Other benefits are made available to retirees, but the only one subsidized by the city is retiree health insurance. The timing of this is not planned around the issues that are going on with the increase in health insurance. We've been talking about this with you for quite some time. We brought it up at, on our five-year forecast and our budget workshops for many years, that it's a challenge and it's something that we have to try to address this liability. So the timing is just unfortunate that it's right at the same time, but it really is an issue, whether it's on the retiree's side or the city's ability to pay for it, that's a challenge for the city and for retirees, this challenge of health insurance costs. The city is not required to subsidize retiree health insurance, but has chosen to provide this benefit in the past, and by state law, the city's required to, cannot charge retirees if we don't subsidize the benefit. We still can't charge retirees more than 125% of the full premium benefit cost for active employees. Several years ago, what really shined light on this issue, several years ago, accounting standards changed that made cities recognize that full cost, that full long-term cost of this obligation for this benefit that's being provided. And in essence, the amount of funding the city would need to fund this liability, it's called an actuarial accrued liability, but the amount of money the city would need to fund this long-term liability is $440 million. We have a study that's conducted by an actuary every other year. They update the study in the interim years. This is based off 2015 information, so it doesn't have this significant increase incorporated yet. So I think realistically, once the actuary in this next year does an update on this, this liability will be even higher. The current value of our trust assets is $40 million, so in essence, if you look at it, it's $440 million liability. We have $40 million that's committed towards this, so we have a $400 million unfunded liability, and that's thinking of the long-term cost. This is trying to look at the OPEB liability, this retiree health insurance, the same way you would a pension system. So to be fully funded in our OPEB liability, our OPEB benefits, like we are with our employee retirement system, we would have to have an additional $400 million set aside now to be able to pay for that benefit in the future.
And Craig, just to put that into perspective?
Yes.
That's the size of our total general fund budget?
That's correct.
For a year, right?
That is correct. That's a very good point.
How does, how does our funding compare to other cities or sites?
It, you know, it's a mix. We haven't really fully studied that, but what the city had done in the past is just like what most other cities had done, and that was just go on a pay-as-you-go basis and just assume that you would just pay for this cost each year and manage it as you could. When the, when the new accounting standards came out, it made everyone recognize what that additional cost was, and made everyone step back and take a look, and a lot of cities have taken different measures. There are some cities that have funded this like a pension system from the very beginning, from day one, and they have funding set aside. Those are really more in the minority. Other cities have taken actions like we have to try to address it as you can, and still others have eliminated the benefit or significantly reduced the benefit. So it's kind of a mix. I don't have a full study on that. We do have some information on some cities and what they're providing right now, but as far as their funding position, I don't have a full study.
Also, for example, provides health insurance, but they do not provide any subsidy for it. So the retirees have to pay the full cost.
Right. That's correct. That is correct.
Are you by any chance watching? I know the city of Dallas just got their credit rating downgraded because of future obligations. I think it's pension, but do you know if it has anything to do with health insurance or...
I'm not sure on that one. I think that, like you said, the focus was on the pension system. I'm not sure if it incorporated the OPEB liability. And what we have with pensions, we had to take pensions on to our financial statements, the unfunded liability of any pensions, including the state pensions for police and fire, as well as our employee retirement system. We had to take those onto our financial statements. Any unfunded liability got recorded into our financial statements last year, was the first year. With OPEB, what we've had to do is recognize the cost of the liability, full cost of liability, and how much is needed to pay for that liability. But I think it's in 2018 with the new standards. We'll have to take this OPEB liability also onto our financial statements, which will shine more light. The rating agencies are aware of the issue, but once you get it onto your financial statements, it's harder for them to, they have to take more focus on that, and so it has something, has a potential to have an impact on that.
Just a point of clarification. When we talk about the OPEB liability of being $440 million, I look at the third page of this report where it talks about the City Council Action Financial Impact Report, and under the heading Description of Impact, the last sentence, it says, "This change is expected to reduce the OPEB liability by 10.9% or $60 million in 10 years, and would eventually eliminate the liability." What period of time are we talking about where it eventually eliminates the liability? And what's that dollar figure? Is that the 440, or is that something else?
It would eliminate that liability that we have calculated now. Now, by the time it, by the time it gets to the point that the liability's eliminated, it's going to be more than 440, but it is that number that it's talking about.
So how far are we out in the future? Is that 15 years or...
Well, you would be, no, it would be employees, the way it's proposed now, and I can go through that as I go through the presentation, it'll put it in more context, but basically employees hired after January 1 of 2017, by the time those employees retire, and then that benefit they would have received. So it's like by the time they retire and the benefit they would have received, anyone who still is receiving the benefit, you would still have to pay that. It's going to be many, many years. It's not 15 years. It's not 20 years. It'd be many years into the future.
Sure. I understand.
And I'll talk a bit more about that at that point.
I understand.
Okay. So as the city started to focus on this liability and the challenge that we had, there were many steps that were taken to try to start to address the liability, and we'll talk about it here at the end of this slide, of just the challenge of being able to fund this into the future. And when you look at it, it's something you would like to be able to provide. It's something we'd like to have a benefit for our retirees. But when you compare that to the financial impact that it has on our ability to serve our citizens and our primary responsibility to have police officers on the street, or firefighters on the street, or to fix potholes, or to provide park services, when you compare it to that, you start to recognize the challenge of being able to fund this long-term. So several actions were taken, starting with the creation of an OPEB trust. It was created in 2008, and it was created for the purpose of funding the retiree benefits, so the benefits are paid from the city funds to this OPEB trust to pay for the retiree benefits, and to build reserves as the city had the ability to pay in additional funds to build reserves, to pay for the future obligation, and to be able to recognize those reserves. So that was one step that was taken. Also, in 2009, the council approved a plan to work towards, at that time, in 2009, the city was paying 70% of retiree premiums, and it was to move to a plan of increase, or decreasing the city subsidy by 2% a year to the point to where we get over a 10-year period to where it's a 50-50 split between retirees and the city. And so that, that is still in plan. Right now, we're at 44%, I think, for retirees, 56% for, I mean, yeah, for retirees, 56% for the city. January 1, 2017, the plan is that that goes to 46% for retirees, 54% for the city. And that's part of the fact, one of the factors that influences that growth in retiree health costs that we've been talking about. The biggest factor is the increase in the cost for the health insurance, but that does play into it as well. The $440 million, let's see. So the city's been paying a, on a pay-as-you-go basis, and right now, we're budgeted to contribute $16 million in FY17 towards retiree health insurance. If we were to fund this the way we fund, we have, in an ordinance, we have a commitment within our ordinance that we would fund up to a contribution of 10% of our employee retirement system to fully fund what's called the, it was the annual required contribution, now the terms changed, to the actuarial determined contribution. But how much is needed to fund annually to pay for this benefit long-term? For the city, we would have to move from $16 million to $33 million a year, so an increase of $17 million a year every year to be able to fund, fully fund this long-term, and it would be moving us gradually to full funding. When you look at $17 million and the impact that has on our operating budget, and you just, when you look at that, it's something we would like to be able to provide, but when you look at it long-term, you start to recognize this isn't a benefit that we can continue to provide, that we can afford to provide without significantly reducing the services to our citizens. So the resolution before you today has two proposals, and I'll look at the first one here and talk a little bit about that. The first proposal looks at a change in eligibility that would impact current employees. Currently, if you work for the city for five years and you attain an age of 55 years of age, you're eligible for the same retiree health insurance subsidy if one is provided. You're eligible for that same subsidy that is available for employees who work to full retirement. We had a task force that the mayor had established several years ago that combined retirees, some current employees, some folks from outside, and one of the first recommendations was, "We need to look at this because that's just entirely too generous, that we need to change that." What we're proposing is change that to where you have to work to age 60 and have at least 15 years of service to be eligible for a subsidy if the subsidy's provided. And what we had proposed when we calculated that working with our actuary is that those employees who've already attained the age of 55 and have five years of service, they would still be eligible, but anyone who hasn't achieved that yet would not be eligible. And then any employees who work to full retirement, so for police and fire uniformed employees, that's 20 years of service. For other management employees, ASME employees, executive employees, that'd be 25 years of service, they would still be eligible. So that's for current employees, would still be eligible if the subsidy is provided. And I keep saying that because I just want to make clear, the city's not required to do this. It's something the city has chosen to do. We're trying to work to manage this so we can continue to provide some level of benefit, but there's no guarantee for anyone of what level of benefit would be available in the future. And so I just want to stress that. And in the resolution, we tried to word it very carefully so it doesn't make any commitment or guarantee. We want to try to manage this the best we can, but we can't make a guarantee. So this change is estimated to reduce the liability by $30 million over 10 years. So it's based on that $440 million liability. It would reduce it to $30 million, by $30 million, not two, but by $30 million over a 10-year period. So the second change, the second proposal we have, this proposal would eliminate the subsidy for retiree health insurance for employees who are hired after January 1 of 2017. This change is estimated to reduce the liability by $60 million over a 10-year period. And then long-term, just like Councilman Stonecoker was pointing out, it'd be over a very long term, it would eliminate that benefit. Now, as we're making these changes, as we're making these changes, if there was some solution that was found, the council could come back and reinstate these benefits if we wanted to, if we had another way to fund that. There's the actions we could take. This takes initial steps to help move us in the direction, not of solving the problem, but of moving us in the direction of addressing the problem and helping to manage that cost. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide there. So if, if, basically, right now, the pay-as-you-go cost is $16 million, and we've talked about what we can do to reduce that liability long-term, just the pay-as-you-go cost currently from our actuary is projected to go from $16 million to $30 million over the next 10 years. And that by itself is going to have significant pressure. I mean, it's different dollars in 10 years, but it's going to have significant pressure on our operating budget, budget and be an increasing pressure on the operating budget. This would not eliminate that increase, but it would help to reduce the rate of increase that we're seeing on the pay-as-you-go cost by making this change. The long-term liability will continue to escalate as healthcare costs grow, and that's going to be true even if we take the actions. Again, this is just taking a step to try to manage that liability, reduce some of that liability. Adopting the changes will affect a limited number of employees who are currently hired. The greater effect would be on employees coming on in the future. And I think the important point there is that employees coming in at that time, there's never been a point at which the city has been in a position to legally obligate ourselves or commit that we could provide that in the future. Never been a time that we could do that. This would make it very clear, though, to employees coming on new, that when they're making this decision about working for the city in whatever capacity, that they would understand that they wouldn't be eligible for, for a subsidy if a subsidy's provided. And again, they would still be eligible to purchase any insurance that's, that's available at that time, but they would have to pay the full cost of it, and they'd be fully informed of that at the time they're making that employment decision.
Craig, that's what I wanted to try to make really clear. We're not offering, we're suggesting that we won't offer a subsidy, but if there were healthcare provided, they could purchase that.
That's correct.
Through the city.
And that's at the point they retire. It's not in their employment time, but at the point that they retire, that would be true.
Right. I think that's really important.
All right. Craig, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, this is an obvious response by the city to address what we heard two weeks ago, where we have a significant number of former employees who are having their healthcare premiums increased, and we're trying to relook at everything we do and how we can, you know, help them, and at the same time, set the city up on more financial sound footing. And Diana, do you want to come up and, and kind of discuss this part of the issue?
Mayor, if you may, I want to address the issue also.
Okay, I don't think you've signed up to speak, but we'll, we'll make sure you get heard.
Private citizen, what I came here for...
You'll have to wait. You'll have to wait.
I did speak with Mr. Morrison yesterday, Mayor. The staff and I are looking at ways to cushion the increase for the retirees, so we're asking that you delay anything for two weeks to give us an opportunity to make, not on this issue, not on this issue. Let me, let me be clear on that. Not on this particular issue. What we are doing is we're looking at a way to address the premium increase for the retirees for 2017. We've talked with several of the retirees and told them that we're looking at something, and we will have a recommendation to you within two weeks.
So two weeks from today, we'll have a recommendation on how to handle the existing under-65 employees that are now seeing a significant increase in their, in their insurance.
And I did talk to, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Morrison yesterday, and I did explain that to him. We've also had conversations with, with other retirees and representatives for the retirees, and advised them that staff will continue to look for alternatives for 2017 and beyond. We are looking at some consortiums. There are some public sectors that have joined together to form a consortium to offer insurance for their employees and their retirees, and so we're exploring that as a possible option as well.
All right, thanks, Diana.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we have a, how many different retirement options are there, and is there a very high deductible, kind of just catastrophic-only coverage plan?
Well, the, the highest deductible plan that we offer is $750. As you know, on our standard plan, the deductible is $250. There is an alternate plan that's available to the retirees that are under age 65, as well as those who are over the age of 65, and that has a $750 deductible option. That is significantly lower in premiums than the standard plan, which is where the majority of the retirees are, which is the plan they're participating in. I think we have approximately 117 retirees that are participating in the alternate plan, the higher deductible plan, and the vast majority are on the standard health insurance plan. And that has also been discussed with the retirees who are impacted by this significant rate increase, and I believe some of them have elected to do that. One other thing that I want to mention is while we are looking at the additional options, we are going to extend open enrollment. Open enrollment is due to expire, your option to enroll in the health plan expires this Friday. We are going to extend that until November the 18th, so that if there are some other options that are made, that are available to the... options that are made, that are available to the retirees, they can delay enrolling in a health insurance plan until they see what those, those different options are.
Can we go beyond the 18th if need be, in extending it?
The 18th is really pushing it kind of late for us because the plan goes into effect January 1. I think the next council meeting is November the 8th, I believe, and so we were trying to give them until the end of the following week to make their choices.
Thank you.
Why, I'm just, in my practice, I don't, I don't, I have, $750 seems so low. I mean, people come in with $1,000 deductibles, 2,000, 5,000, and the 5,000 deductible obviously is extremely inexpensive. It's basically like not having insurance unless something catastrophic happens to your family, but, but it is an option that allows somebody to have a very inexpensive insurance plan. Is it, I mean, is it possible to offer something other than kind of the Cadillac plan, if you will, that has just a $750 deductible?
Oh, absolutely, and we're looking at all of those different options. As Mr. Freeman mentioned before, there was a committee that was formed, established by the mayor a few years ago, that consisted of retirees, private citizens, city staff, and this was the plan that was, that came out of that committee. This is the plan that was recommended by that committee so that the retirees could have some relief on those rising health insurance premiums. And very few have taken advantage of that opportunity. But we will certainly be looking at different plan design changes that we can offer to the retirees to, to provide longer-term solutions for them.
Okay. Diana, you, you mentioned, I think you used the term consortium. Is that a pooling of responsibility with other entities?
Yes, it is. As a matter of fact, the, the particular plan that we're looking at, there aren't any large cities that are participating currently, but we have reached out, we reached out about a week and a half ago to the administrator of that particular plan. The City of Yukon did just join, participate in that plan in July, and it is a public-sector group, so there are counties, there are school districts, there are municipalities, obviously smaller municipalities that participate, but they are seeing that costs are being controlled, better controlled because of the larger pool of, of participants.
But if, if there is a catastrophic claim against one of the entities, we would have to fork up to beat that claim, would we not?
No, it's, it's, it's my understanding, and we have not met with them yet, we have requested a meeting, but it's my understanding that those catastrophic claims are paid through the, the contributions that are made into this consortium. So, for example, this consortium group, if the city were a participant in that, that particular consortium, we would have a representative on their board, and that board sets premiums every year. Now, what would not be available, as you know, we negotiate health insurance changes with our, our unions. That would not be, that would no longer be an option in terms of the level of benefits that are offered, so the deductibles, the premiums, that would not be available for us to discuss with the unions. Now, what could be available, continue to be available at the bargaining table, would be the level of premiums that they're contributing, the percentage of premiums they're contributing. So this is still very new for us. As I mentioned, we've reached out to those individuals to see if we couldn't get a meeting, set a meeting with them to find out more about the consortium, but we are looking at some, some other possibilities, short-term and long-term possibilities.
Well, if you would, as you look at this, check out the joint server liability aspect of this, because we were, I was in one of these plans a number of years ago, and the plan went under, and the cost that we had to incur when the plan went under was far greater than the savings during the whole time it was in operation.
Oh, absolutely.
Be careful.
We, we will look at all aspects of it.
Okay, thanks, Diana.
Thank you.
You'll have to, you'll have to wait. John George?
Good morning, counsel. John George, FOP president, 1624 South Agnew. I'll make it short, nothing controversial. I'm just asking for a postponement or delay in this resolution till maybe like December 20th. It's not going to affect anything. We're not hiring anybody, it won't take effect till January 1st because we're in talks. Obviously, things, this is a rapidly changing environment. We've even talked about blending active and retirees. If this resolution passes, that throws that out the door, we can't do it. And that's something we'd like to look at. You can't blend at that point because there's no new employees coming on. You can't ask them to pay more for a benefit they won't get later if we don't, if the new hires are not allowed to participate. So all I'm asking at this point is just to postpone this till December 20th so we can have some time to try to figure some things out. The postponement won't affect anything, and that's really all I'm asking. Thank you.
Mr. George, the, the issue that you're addressing is a separate issue from the, the resolution that's before the council today.
Correct. But if this resolution passes and new hires are no longer eligible for retiree insurance, there'll be nobody, you can't ask them to pay a higher rate to blend in with everybody if they're not going to get the benefit later.
Well.
So all I'm asking is this, just to slow down and let's just postpone the resolution till we have more time to talk, because there's a lot of unknowns that we haven't talked about yet, this is all so new. Just give us some time to work through it. We're all in favor of trying to make this work, trust me.
Well, just one point of clarification, individuals hired on or after January 1st of 2017 would be eligible for health insurance, it's just not eligible for the city subsidy.
At 100%.
Correct.
I know, and that's, that's the, that's obviously the problem. 50%, as we all know, two weeks ago, it's a tremendous amount in what they're paying now. The new, the new hires would have to pay double that. All I'm asking is for us to slow down and give us a chance to try to work through it. That's, that's it. We're committed to trying to work through this, I promise that. We want, it affects, it's very important to the council, and it's very important to the FOP, and I'm sure the other, the other unions as well. Passing the resolution today does not have to happen because nothing changes. Matter of fact, it probably doesn't even have to pass for months because we're in a hiring freeze, we're not hiring new hires, there's nobody that's going to come on board. I'm just asking that we slow it down to give us a chance to meet with everyone and see if we can come up with something, and we may not. This may be what you have to do a couple of months from now, I understand that. But this is, as we've all talked about, this is ever-changing fast, and nobody knows exactly what's going on. That's all I'm asking, is let's slow down a little bit and give us a chance to figure it out as well.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, George Fina?
Morning. Couple of years ago, we talked up here and it was said to me, we're not trying to take your insurance away. Most of you were here, you heard that. This is such a fast deal, it needs to be, we need to sit down, we need to get clear heads, we need to have both sides of this thing talk about this thing. You're in charge of the future of this city, and if you vote this resolution, you are slashing the future of your employees that are coming to work. It's not a good deal. There's ways to get this done. I, I negotiated a lot of contracts, and I always sat on the other side. I don't want to kill the goose that lays the golden egg, but we can work things out without doing this. This is slash. And I, and it may be not be it, but I feel like it's punishment because we came up and complained about the cost of the insurance. Maybe I'm out of line, but I would appreciate it very much if we would slow down and let's get some people to sit down and talk about this thing. Because I read that thing, my wife read that thing last night, and she's pretty level-headed. She said, "There's two or three things in here that scare me to death." So I, I just wish that you would use every bit of what you have to get this thing worked out right. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, you're next. Sure.
Okay. I'm not an attorney.
Please give your name, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is George Morrison. I've been a citizen of Oklahoma City for 62 and a half years, presently in Ward 5. I have sent emails to a number of members on the city council in regards to what we've been talking about. There's actually, I worked for Oklahoma City for 37 years, six months, and 17 days, from October 13th, 1972, to April 30th, 2010. Now, at that point, the ratio, as far as your retiree, was a 70/30 as far as the premiums being paid. Oklahoma City employees, the premium is a 20/80. You would think that 10% math would be pretty simple, but what happens is it's really a very complicated issue, and what, what you've done, you have different plans, you have what's referred to as different pools, I'm calling them groups. Basically, insurance is, cost, health insurance is really inflated, there's no question about that, and it's, basically, the, the actuary that I requested, which was supposedly the basis for the 56% increase, it were being subjected to 2017. Just to put a spin on that, when I retired back in 2010, at the ratio of 32% on my side, the city 68%, which there's supposed to be a balance of a 50/50 ratio. I'm trying to paint a picture here because what I found is, looking at the actuary, there's, there's a missing piece of that picture, there's a missing link. And just to emphasize that, but my point is, from 2010 to 2017, seven-year periods since I retired, my premiums will have increased 244%, more than that, 244.17%. I've got the math, you know, I can show it to you, I don't have a PowerPoint. I feel like I've been thrown under the bus. One thing I just had found out recently that I was totally unaware of, when you look at the summary that gives you your options, of course, Oklahoma City has an alternate indemnity plan, which reduces those costs for those, those members, group, or pool. According to the actuary, there's actually 1,307 retirees that are above age 65. Out of that 1,307 retirees above 65, there's 100, 691 spouses, okay? According to the numbers on the actuary, this is by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, by the way, there's 380 in the pool or group that I'm in that are under age 64. I'm married, I'm three and a half years older than my wife. My point is, what I found that Oklahoma City council has allowed since 2003, if you're in this pool, and say, for instance, not only the retiree, even his spouse, if you turn age 65, you're separated from the pool, from the group that you should technically be in, and you're put over here in the over-age 65, which is actually supplemented by Medicare. They pay 20% of the premium through the primary insurance. There's one person that's still under age 65. What, what's happened is, if you look at the booklets, and it's, it's a missing piece. It's a missing link, what's happening, and don't get me wrong, I thank God every day for the job that I have for Oklahoma City, and I'm, I'm grateful, not only to God, but Oklahoma City for the benefits that I've received, even through the retirement system, which, by the way, isn't equal to police and fire department employees, but it's a good one. My point is, is that you would think that the Oklahoma City has been paying for this number of people that they've separated in a group, according to the actuary, that are actually under age 65 that are put in the over-65 plan. Yeah, it's pretty simple. The problem is, it's a big number, it's been going on for a long time. I'm not trying to change that, but there's a hidden fact there. If you look at the booklet and you see the total premium cost compared to under 65, and you look at the premium cost compared to over 65, it doesn't show that. So when I, when I found this out, what, what's happening is you're taking a million dollars out of this 38 pool or group, and 87 people, according to what I just found out yesterday evening, are benefiting. Now, that's shared with Oklahoma City because that premium, there's a reduction in that premium that Oklahoma City's saving. It's, it's over half a million dollars per year with 87 number. I'm in what I call my crying-out-loud mode. I feel like the lone wolf. I didn't know that these people were appearing here today, but the problem is, is that what I found out, I talked to Mr. Greenwell about this, I contacted our local union, I called the FOP. What's happening right now is out of the 380 pool group, 200 of those people are police Their union, from what I understand, are trying to pull them out to a different group and through their collective bargaining, from what I understand, they're trying to change it to where they're included in the active employees. And that's the way it should be, in my opinion, and in some, one of the proposals, you're, you're trying to throw anyone that employs after 2017 under the bus. I feel like I've been run over several times with a 244% increase in the last seven years. I've got a proposal, recommendation, and I really, I'm not an expert on, on how you vote, I like to put it in order and get a second, but I, the, here's the thing, you can take something like the actuary, got a copy right here through the Open Records Act, you can take that piece of paper, and there's inaccuracies, it's very complicated. I mean, I've only viewed it a short time, I'm not an attorney, but what I'm saying is there's, there's a missing links, there's missing pieces of the, the picture. And, you know, really, what I tried to do, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, what I've tried to do is I've tried to paint a picture, and my picture's real ugly.
Can, can you hand that to our staff so we can review it?
Sure.
Okay.
I've sent emails, it, it, you've already had the information.
Okay, well, then we probably already reviewed your idea, and, and, you know, this is a work in progress.
Can I make a recommendation?
If you'll make it quick.
It's a proposal, I'll make it quick. What I would really like to put in motion for the city council to vote on, or at least a recommendation along with these others, is, it's a common solution, no, no one really loses.
What is it?
Okay. If you take these pools and combine them with the active employees, which you're only paying 80, 20% of the premiums, and you put all these pools combined in that same group, in regards to the ratio, which right now, the retirees at 46% as of 2017, 44% right now, 2017, Oklahoma City's premiums will actually be 54%. I'm not trying to take away the 50/50 balance, what I want is something fair, not only from the people that have been really...
Mr. Morrison, thanks. We're, we're looking at all of this, and if you've, if you've given your idea to the staff, I'm sure it's being considered respectfully, so thanks for coming down today.
Well, I'm just not giving it to the staff right now.
I'm going to have to move on. Thank you, though, for coming down.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Tim, you want to add before council continues to discuss the item?
Yeah, these are, are, some are related, but quite frankly, they're, they're different issues, they both have to do with retiree health insurance. What we're doing today is making two changes to, to, to the resolution. If approved, we'd make two changes. One would be to not provide subsidies for health insurance, we should provide the health insurance at, at full cost for new employees hired after January 1 of 17, which wouldn't kick in for 20 to 25 years after, after the fact, so it wouldn't kick into till 2037 or 2042. And the other has to do with, with, with what we think is a...
What we're doing today is making two changes to the resolution. If approved, we'd make two changes. One would be to not provide subsidies for health insurance, we should provide the health insurance at full cost for new employees hired after January 1 of 17, which wouldn't kick in for 20 to 25 years after the fact, so it wouldn't kick into till 2037 or 2042. And the other has to do with what we think is a very generous benefit, where you get now health insurance after five years and 55 years of age, and we'd like to expand that out a little bit. So those are the two changes today. In regard to the under-65 retirees that have seen their insurances go up dramatically in the next year, we will have some recommendations in the next couple of weeks. We've looked at the blending situation, and quite frankly, there's some issues with the blending situation, so we've got a couple of other solutions that'll hopefully be accepted to everyone as we go down the line. The blending situation, it appears it's gonna be pretty expensive for the general fund if we do that, and we'll get into details on that more specifically in two weeks.
The resolution before us today, it's been suggested that we should delay voting on it, is, in my mind, if, we could pass the resolution today and change the resolution a month from now or two months from now, at any time in the future.
10 years from now, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other comments from council?
Yes, may I? Two items. One, with respect to Mr. Fina's point, I know it may seem that way from an outsider's perspective, but there was never any, this is not any type of retaliation. We've been talking, or Craig's been, Mr. Freeman's been providing us these ideas, perhaps as long as a year ago, looking at modification to the retirees or new hires, so this has nothing to do with these very high increases in insurance. And, I mean, let me say this too, since I'm up here, you know, the increases that the employees and retirees of Oklahoma City are experiencing, unfortunately, they are just very similar to what we're seeing in the private sector and throughout the state of Oklahoma. Insurance premiums have just, in my opinion, have gotten out of control. Having said that, Mr. George's request to postpone this for a couple of weeks, I don't see a problem with it. It's not going to dilute the resolution if we waited two weeks, Mr. Freeman's proposed resolution, if we waited two weeks and voted upon it when Ms. Berry comes back with a revised plan for the health insurance. So I don't see a problem with delaying voting on Mr. Freeman's proposal at this time for two weeks, I mean, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1st anyway. And as Mr. George pointed out, we're not hiring anybody, so if we waited a couple of weeks or more...
David, what would you think about six weeks to December 20th?
Yeah, I think as long as we do it between now and December 31st, from my perspective, unless we've got a potential person that we are going to hire, and they're, you know, weighing the overall issues before they make a decision, I could, you know, I'm fine, we could do it the end of November, 1st of December.
But we could also pass the resolution today and then pass a different resolution that would change this resolution, so...
Yes, sir, I understand.
And the second thing is, you know, we can't really go forward with addressing the needs we heard last time unless we know we're gonna do this, because this is what allows us to reset the clock and help the employees that we heard so passionately from two weeks ago.
I agree. From my perspective, these two changes in this resolution are completely common sense, that nothing's gonna change my mind in two months, so I don't see any actual reason to delay it.
It seems like it's harder to undo something once you pass it, I don't, I can't recall any time where we passed something and then modified it six weeks later, I mean, maybe I just don't remember it, but...
Uber and Lyft regulations.
What's that?
Uber and Lyft regulations. Yeah, we pass them and then we undid them.
Okay.
I can see that, the idea in passing it today, but it seems to me, this is a matter that has such gravity that it's nothing wrong with waiting two weeks to do it. It's, I think, out of respect for the employees and the impact it'll have on future employees of the city, waiting two more weeks and talking about it and giving people an opportunity to weigh in on it again is not a bad idea. I think six weeks is too long, I don't want to wait until just the last meeting in a year where we don't have any opportunity to do it, but to the next meeting seems to me to be not unreasonable. And a secondary reason for that is, we've got to untangle this resolution from the problems that most of these people in the room are interested in, which is the current employees' and current retirees' premium increases. It seems to me, listening, I had to be out so I didn't hear all of it, but to the extent I did hear it, it seems to be tangled up with the premium increase for retirees, and we've got to somehow make sure people understand this doesn't have anything to do with that. This has to do with self-preservation. This basically has to do with the country's lack of an ability to come to grips with healthcare costs, and it's not an Oklahoma City problem, it's a USA problem. While I was outside, I was talking to those young people that had been here from France, and I asked them what kind of a healthcare, and they have a single payer system, and they're very satisfied with it. They're not flying to USA to have an appendectomy, you know, they don't pay a thousand dollars for a pill. So, I mean, it's not an Oklahoma City problem, it's a national problem in how we deal with healthcare. Oklahoma City's just trying to survive inside that paradigm which has been created for us by someone else. But my, I think we have to pass this at some point in time, I'm just, I think two weeks is respectful of the kind of attitudes that people have about it and the need for people to know more about it. I don't think we have a choice but to pass it. It's a shame, because what's left of the middle class in this country are people that work for municipalities, state governments, federal governments, that's what's left of it. And to a large extent, it's built on healthcare, is people have healthcare and pensions. And I think this is just one more whack at the middle class to do this, but I don't, but I don't think the city has a choice. But I would move to defer it for two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any comments on...
Yeah, I think it needs to be passed, too. I think Craig, I know the hours he and his staff have put into this, and that presentation was outstanding today, Craig, and made sense to me, but what I'm so devastated about is our federal government, our president, our congress, our state government, cannot propose any meaningful solutions to where we find ourselves today. And my heart goes out to our employees, my heart goes out to small businesses that are trying to survive, but we have to keep moving forward to make sure that we are able to provide basic services to our citizens. And no one is giving us any alternatives, no one is giving us any other options, we are on our own on this, and we've got to strike quickly.
Mayor, I think I just, I swear, I really can't speak very well, but I just would like to reiterate what David said, which is, there is not a direct linkage between these two issues. Craig came to us, I really think it's more than a year ago that we began to talk about these alternatives, and George, you know, I recognize it may seem like a linkage because of the timing, but it really is not true. I believe with James that we have no alternatives, we have to pass this, but I am willing, with respect to this conversation, because it does seem intertwined, that perhaps we wait two weeks. I'm not in favor of waiting any longer than two weeks, because we need to be able to implement by January 1st, but I could live with two weeks.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, everybody ready to vote on the deferral? All right, we're voting to defer for two weeks, and the deferral passes 7-2. All right, this moves us on to item 9L, which has to do with debt and the water trust, and Chris Browning is here.
Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
This is the council. When the Clean Water Act and Safe Drinking Water Act were promulgated, they set aside funds for the federal government to pay for water sewer projects. In Oklahoma, that program is administered by the Departments of Environmental Quality and the Water Resources Board. Also in Oklahoma, the beneficiary of a public trust must approve any increase in indebtedness of its trust, so the resolution in this agenda item fulfills that requirement for the city of Oklahoma City. For each parity revenue bond, we're required to set aside an additional 10% Nescro. And so when we get a revenue bond, we have to get 110% of what we really need and pay the interest on that, on that full amount. On the state revolving loan program, we don't have to do that. We get a loan for the amount, and we don't have to do that 10% set aside, so there's a savings of interest during the term of that loan. Typically, there are funds set aside for us in the amount of $25 million annually, but this year, there was a surplus, so they've offered 57 million and change. So that's kind of a windfall for us. The interest rate for the SRF is comparative and competitive to what we generally pay as a AAA-rated utility, so at this time, we would recommend approval of this item.
All right, thanks, Chris. Any comments or questions on item 9L?
Mayor, I'd move approval.
All right, it's now that we're good to go, cast your votes, pass unanimously, thank you. All right, item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session?
We actually deferred that upfront.
Okay. Stricken, okay. Item 9M, stricken from the agenda. Item 9N, I understand we do not need executive session?
Right.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9O, I understand we do not need executive session?
No.
Yes, we do on that, yes.
We do need executive session. All right, how about a motion then to move 9O into executive session?
And then we would recommend not to take action on P1 or 2 until after that executive session.
All right, we're voting on item 9P, and that item moves into executive session, which is, Jim indicates, kind of says we should wait on P1 and 2 until after we get out of executive session, so we'll just kind of move on, pass it and come back. Item 9Q, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to move item 9Q into executive session? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9R, is claims recommended for denial? All right, is there a motion on 9R? Anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9R, claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? Pass unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval, is anyone here hoping to speak on any of those items?
All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
Item 11 is items from council, and first up, we have a couple of items that have come from the council's legislative committee, and Jane Abraham is gonna be here to explain the ideas that we would like to present to the state and federal legislative bodies in the next calendar year.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager, and I'll just run through these quickly. The legislative committee met and considered the items coming before you today in terms of bringing these to both the state and the federal bodies for consideration. So just an overview of our process, the city manager sends out a request to department heads for items that they believe require a legislative fix, either on the state or the federal level, and then these items are considered by the council legislative committee. We also have items that come forward from individual council members that they are interested in pursuing, and then the committee makes the recommendation to council, and staff works with our contracted consultants to secure bill authors and then to guide the bills through the legislature. And also to, we spend a lot of time playing defense at the legislature, particularly on the state level, trying to avert harmful legislation that would affect the city. Just an overview of the state legislative issues from last year that we had some success with. It was a challenging session, as you all know, with the significant revenue problems that they had at the state level that affected many different areas in the state, but we did have some bills that were successful. We were able to, House Bill 3126 provides for improvements to the 911 emergency system statewide, and there's an increase in the fee that will go into effect January 1st, and then operational changes go into effect November 1st, in terms of additional reporting requirements, et cetera, and enhancements to the system to try to make it better statewide. House Bill 2624 will enhance the level of ownership documentation required for vehicles which are being sold to scrap dealers, and this was brought forward by our police department in an effort to try to affect car stealing, essentially, so that there would be more than just a bill of sale required, they would actually have a certificate of ownership. House Bill 2553 addresses billboard relocation permits, which are issued by ODOT, to take municipal zoning into account, and that will also go into effect November 1st. And then House Bill 2531 will enhance the effort to collect internet sales tax on remote transactions, and this is a voluntary effort, so we still are, we still need the federal legislation in order to be, you know, completely effective. This is sort of a stopgap measure to try to improve enforcement in the collection of remote transaction sales tax.
Jane, can you, do you happen to know the details of that enhanced effort?
I know that it is voluntary, there are a couple of different things that remote sellers are encouraged to register with the tax commission as a vendor, and to, but it doesn't define nexus from a legal standpoint, it is a voluntary system. I can get details from the tax commission to see kind of how they plan to implement that program.
Thank you.
That would be helpful, yeah. I know that the federal legislation is still necessary in terms of requiring collection of sales tax from remote vendors, but this would be, they think this will help the situation.
The state could, on their own, do a better job of educating the citizens of Oklahoma City as far as their responsibilities, they've just chosen not to, so I'm interested to see what their idea of enhanced effort to collect include.
Okay, sure, I'll bring that forward. So, looking forward to 2017, the priority issues that are outlined are, of course, local control over local issues, things that we believe should be handled on a local level as opposed to preempted by state legislation, maintaining funding for transit, also to preserve funding for the Heartland Flyer rail service, which was one item that kind of came under attack last legislative session, and there will be an interim study tomorrow to discuss the Heartland Flyer and how important it is to all of the different cities along that route. And then our, the last priority issue is to monitor efforts to exempt sales tax on existing tax base, and also encourage efforts to diversify revenue for municipalities. In terms of our initiative items, and these are essentially defined as bills that we will seek authors for and bring legislation forward, the first is to provide for community service program for indigent defendants, and that just kind of fills in kind of a loophole where judges would be able to assign community service for those defendants who were not able to pay their fees and fines, that community service would be an option. The second is to create a task force to examine revenue and budget policy at the state and local levels, and this was the issue that Councilman Greenwell and Councilman Stonecypher had brought forward. And the third item is enactment of real ID compliant driver licenses, and this is an issue where Oklahoma has not been compliant with this provision, and we've continued to get extensions from the Department of Homeland Security, but those have now run out, and so we need to have real ID compliant licenses in order for those licenses to remain eligible for people to use it to get on airplanes. And that's where we're very concerned from our airport standpoint and economic development in terms of having those compliant licenses.
Jane, it's just, it's not just airplanes.
Correct.
It's military bases and, you know, all sorts of other things.
And that compliance is actually the first tier, and that has been, we didn't get an extension on that, so now, you know, Oklahoma driver license will not be compliant to enter military bases, federal facilities, et cetera. So it's a big issue.
So, you know, hopefully people understand that, you know, to get on an airplane, you'll have to have a passport at this point, and...
The driver's license still works? For... Still works for airplanes.
For how long now?
Until... Until our next extension runs out in January, I believe.
Right. I mean, it's a very short, it's, it's not a tremendously long period of time.
Right.
Anyway, I, I just think that people really don't understand. Very few people have passports.
I'm sorry. I misspoke. The, the federal facilities, that, that first tier kicks in in January. We have a longer extension for airplanes. It is a little bit longer.
That's incredibly important that we do this.
It is. It is. The, the next item is to modify posting requirements for notice and agenda for public meetings. Currently, it were required, I don't know if you noticed, several months where we had our agenda kind of papering the walls of, of City Hall as you come in. We think that those could be modified to accommodate more current methods of communication. And then the final one is to preserve municipalities' ability to address derelict properties and enforce municipal codes and zoning, which also is a perennial issue that comes up in terms of trying to preserve that ability for cities. And then this, these are kind of our support and oppose issues. We oppose changes to the asset forfeiture program that would be detrimental to law enforcement efforts. But the second is to retain tools for economic development. And then third is to monitor water rights and clean water supplies, kind of one of those other issues that we regularly watch closely. Fourth is to oppose efforts to impose unfunded mandates on municipalities. And then the final one is to monitor any efforts to limit dates for local elections. Turning over to our federal issues, this is the complete list here. Of course, number one is the Remote Transactions Parity Act, which we talked about a little bit already, the E-Fairness legislation that's very important. The second item is funding for transportation and transit, support for Tinker Air Force Base. There is talk that there may be a BRAC effort that comes forward, and so we continue to vigorously support Tinker Air Force Base. The fourth is to retain tax-free status of municipal bonds. And then we also need to support airport funding and also FAA operations, which is a big employer here in Oklahoma City. We monitor the Clean Air Act enforcement standards to try to maintain our compliance with the Clean Air Act. That's very important to us. And then we also support economic development and local grant programs, such as CDVG and the Home Program. The next one is extension and renewal of empowerment zone designation or the different characteristics that that takes on. And then the final one is to support Amtrak and passenger rail service, which is also important to our overall multimodal transportation efforts. So I will entertain any questions?
All right. Looking at the federal legislative agenda. Comments or questions?
Hey, that's a question. I mean, to me, by far, the most important issue of many important issues is the local control for, for local issues. And I just don't know how you, you know, insanity is doing the same thing and hoping for a different result as it said, and it applies here. I don't, I don't, I don't see that we have any chance of that working with so many different corporate entities not wanting to fight in each city and wanting to, to do things at the state level, groups like Alec wanting preemption. And it's clearly this legislature is, that's, they've done it time and time and time, year after the past five years and longer. What, what options are there outside of just lobbying as we've done? I mean, is it, what, what could we do different with other municipalities or?
Yeah. It is. It's a, it's a significant problem, and it's a growing problem in some ways, just because of the, the legislature changes out. You know, there's a significant fraction that moves out every election cycle. And so I think part of what we try to do is to build relationships with the new legislators coming in so that they can, you know, maybe understand municipalities and what we do better.
Seems like the deck.
But it's a challenge.
It seems like the deck is stacked against us with so many rural legislators. And could you, or could cities get together? You know, I've, I've already sent in my absentee ballot. I voted against 779. I, I can't stand that, the result of that initiative petition, the one sent sales tax. But I wonder if that starts to proliferate now with a legislature that, that is neglecting so many of their duties in the, in the minds of so many citizens, that people use the initiative petition route as an alternative. And I'm wondering, could you, could you address preemption through an initiative petition?
I don't know where the money would be. It takes money to pass an initiative petition.
It takes a lot, right.
And the ones that you see get out there have, there's some, somebody's making something out of it, and that's why, that's why they get as far as they do.
Could, could cities, cities be involved in something like that or, or no? That would violate our?
I really don't know.
Yeah.
The bully pulp, but, but beyond that, there's very little we can do.
Yeah. It's an interesting idea.
It is.
You're kind of changing the Constitution, basically.
You're talking about a petition constitutional amendment on a state question.
Right. Right. To allow cities to, to determine their own self-determination.
There's still time left, though, between that, two weeks from today, to contact every person working for the, that's running for the legislature and ask them where they stand. It's not too late still to do that. The only way it's going to change is to change the minds of the people that are in the legislature. Ultimately, there's no other way that's going to work. We've got two weeks. It wouldn't, all of us consider ourselves to be involved citizens. There's nothing wrong with picking up the phone and calling anybody that's running in your area and asking them how they stand on that. I think just asking them the question is important. I think a lot of them don't even recognize what they've done to us. They've just kind of gone along with their, with their House caucus or their Senate caucus or whatever and not really looked into what they're doing. I just, I think the act of just calling everybody, the guy running for the House, the guy running for the Senate, the people running for any seat that you, and ask them how they feel about it and tell them how you feel about it. It's not too late to do that. I, I do think there's, there is a change. I think some of the people that are in office now, I've had an opportunity to contact, to talk to a couple of them that have been part of the House caucus that, that did bad things to the city, and I think they're willing at least to have a conversation about it. There are a number of vacant seats in the city where there's nobody that's been, been already tainted by that. I think the caucus may take a different face this year. I think there's a good possibility that at least in the House, there will be an Oklahoma City caucus, a bipartisan Oklahoma City caucus. But I think it's up to us to, to try to do that. We can call people like James's father-in-law and ask him what he's going to do.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Jane on the legislative agendas at the federal or state level? All right. Jane, we appreciate it. And in the, in the last meeting, we also, you know, challenged or asked the staff to continue to look at, at more aggressive concepts that we could take to the legislature at the state level, so we play a little more offense than defense this year. So I assume we're going to hear more on that if there's any advancement later on. Jane, thank you. All right. Items from council. Mark, you have anything for us?
I need a motion.
Okay. Let me, let me stop that proceeding, and, and we'll, we'll need a resolution adopted to approve the agendas that she has just stated.
Move the item.
First one is 11A, and this is our federal legislative program. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then 11B, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you, friends. Mark?
I think it's active.
All right. John? Meg? All right. Today's a good day to ask Meg a question if you have anything on the line. All right. Pete? All right. Larry? Ed?
I want to extend my condolences to the, to the Bob Lemon family and, and let everyone know that, that services will be delayed a little bit, but they'll be on November 13th at the Church of the Open Arms at 2:00 PM. That's on a Sunday afternoon. The progressive community, the city of Oklahoma City, the state of Oklahoma lost one of its greatest philanthropists, political activists. He won't be on the, the front page of the paper. He won't be in the news. He won't get the accolades that, that others will. But in terms of those who've passed in recent memory and years past, I think this, this blow is bigger in so many ways. His outreach and what, what he contributed both in the past and what it means for the You won't hear about him because he was such a humble man. He lived in a very humble home in Belle Isle in, in Ward 2. He believed as, his faith that he should be humble, that he should have his needs met, and then invest in his community, invest in nonprofits, invest in political causes, especially women, the LGBT community and the impoverished. I mean, just ferocious. What, what, he saw the statistics on women in Oklahoma, and he fought ferociously. And it's, it's going to have an impact, and I have some fear about, about the future, about losing, because it's, it's very subtle in some ways, but it's, it's going to have an impact in terms of what he did and what he could recruit other people to do. He, he lived to be 87. He was born in Shattuck, Oklahoma, in the, in the Dust Bowl. And shortly after living through that, was told from some diabetes and some other issues that he, that he, if everything went right, all the, everything, he would live to be in his 40s, and then that would be his life expectancy. And so despite that, he went to the University of Texas, got a law degree, started out as the city attorney for Perryton, Texas, and ended up being counsel for a water conservation board for 50 years, but, and a great, just illustrious career. But there, there is this well-described phenomenon of, of people who are in a situation where everybody else in the same situation should be dead, and you survive. It doesn't, it amplifies whatever altruism and good characteristics you have, and I think he, he was the prototypical example of that. He just lived every day, I mean, he lived decades past when he was supposed to live, and he just wanted to make the most of every single day. He, he ate just tons of fruits and vegetables, stayed away from processed food, great discipline, walking every day, gave himself his insulin shots every day, and, and then just fought for every people. People would come into his kitchen in his, in his home in Belle Isle, and he just, he fought for everyone. I want to just, if I could just hear his voice, I'd be very grateful. One more time in this chamber. He came and spoke in 2011 on the Anti-Discrimination Committee ordinance. Meg was the vice mayor, and she had a stack of people to speak, and she just, she asked if, let him know the, the three minutes, but asked if he could just summarize everything in one sentence, and I'm, I'm glad Meg did that, and very politely. She asked him to, to summarize it in one sentence, and it goes to the heart of everything he lived for. So could, Boyd, could you play that?
Well, yeah. If I were to say a, if I were to say a prayer today, I, I would close it like this. I pray to God the day will come when people will respect all of God's children, not just some of them, but all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. We appreciate you coming forward.
I would like to add my condolences to the Lemon family. He was a, he was a, a one-of-a-kind individual and, and stood for things that sometimes aren't easy to stand for, and he did it, he was, he was brave and generous and all the things you'd want somebody to be.
And I have to also agree with Dr. Shadid and Councilman Wyatt and Forrest what Bob Lemon meant to Oklahoma City. A lot of people don't know, but he was, for a long period of time, was one of the major sponsors to the Martin of the King Parade. And he, matter of fact, he fitted a lot of the expenses, so we could have the Martin of the King Parade.
All right. City manager reports.
Mayor, you asked that we get a report on some of the ODOT projects that are going on, so Eric Winger is here this morning to give us that update.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got a presentation for you this morning that includes ODOT, but then we've also received a number of questions on the Turnpike Authority projects, which are somewhat related. It's sometimes hard to discern between the two because they affect a lot of our major city roads, or at least roads that run through our cities, so I'll be presenting on both. My thanks to my assistant Rhonda Bowles and also J.C. Reese that are here today that helped put together this presentation to get us started. So when we look at projects and we talk about the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and we talk about the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, I'm going to present this morning just on the major projects. At the end of this presentation, I'm going to give you some resources of where you can go if there's some other lesser or minor projects that you're interested in, references to their websites so you can look that information up. So on ODOT, we're going to update on I-235, I-44, I-35, I-240, State Highway 74, which is Portland Avenue, the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and then for OTA, the Turnpike Authority, the Eastern Oklahoma County Turnpike and the Southwest Kilpatrick Extension. So the work on I-235 and I-44, it's a considerably large project. I think you're going to find that for each of these that I'm going to present. This one is actually constructed or being constructed in seven different phases, with the first phase having begun back in 2011. The second phase began in '13. The next one is getting ready to begin, but there's actually several remaining phases with all of the work not even beginning to start until 2020. So the total cost of the project at I-235 and I-44 is nearly $172 million. This is a, a drawing. It's, it's small, I, I know that, but it shows all the different phases in different color coatings. And so east and west across the page is, of course, Interstate 44, and then north and south, you'll see I-235, and you'll see the major interchange there, nearly in the center of that drawing. The phases that you see, and I know they're hard to read, but I'll kind of just point those out. 2A is in yellow. It's that northeast quadrant. It was what began in 2011. 3B is in the light blue. That was work that began in 2013. It's the northwest quadrant. Phase 4, dark blue, which is the work that's getting ready to begin in 2016, has a lot to do with the BNSF Railroad and a lot of the relocations, getting ready for the major interchange work. And then Phase 7 in green is the mainline work as well. That's also scheduled to begin this year. But again, there are remaining phases, and you're going to see there's several other colors of red, orange and pink. And those are areas where the actual interchange construction, the flyover bridges, and then, of course, the southeast quadrant will be constructed in future years. And so, yes, there's been a lot of progress in this interchange, but I would tell you that it's, you know, 50% complete. There's a lot more to come, so that you can expect some detours, some other traffic challenges. But ODOT has been pretty good, making sure that they get those notices out, making sure that residents and area commuters are aware of those. They're continuing to also make further improvements in the area. Moving on to I-35 and I-240, another very significant project for ODOT, five phases which began in the spring of 2016, so just this year. With the first phase, they've actually separated into two smaller phases. And so the map that I'm getting ready to show you has one color, but they actually have two different contractors that are working on that. With the final four phases currently in design, the design on those will not finish until 2021, so the last of those design projects won't even begin until that time. Total cost for the improvements of this interchange is $115 million. Now, as we talk about I-44, we talk about I-240, these are all safety enhancements. I think most of us that have driven those, you'll find that the on and off ramps are of an older design, and there's a lot of accidents that occur just because of the way that the geometry was configured. There's a lot of ramp changes. There's a lot of changes to the access to local streets. But again, both these projects are safety-related in nature. Again, as you'll see this, north and south is I-35, left and right, east and west is I-240. You'll see a number of the improvements. So what is in purple on the lower left and to the left is the work that's been underway this year. You'll see that with a lot of the new retaining walls that are there. You're going to see that with some of the new eastbound to southbound connections that have been made from 240 to I-35. So the remaining work, they're still acquiring right away. There's still interchanges that are going to be underway in the years 2017 and 2018. What you see in red, which affects the northwest and the southeast quadrants, which includes some frontage roads, that work is expected to begin in 2020. But then the green, the light blue and the yellow are not until 2021. So the actual interchange is a few years away. This project is just beginning, so a lot of work to come. State Highway 74 is a project that I think, especially those in North Oklahoma City, have already taken advantage of. This is a project that was constructed in, in two separate phases. The south portion, which basically was just south of 150th Street to just north of 164th, that work has been done. So that completed this summer. But the second phase is scheduled to begin in early 2018 and complete in the spring of 2019. The total cost for the second phase is $29 million. This is the work that's been completed. So north is to your right. The street that you see nearly in the middle is the northwest 150th, 150th, and the street north-south that's up, down on the drawing is 164th. So virtually everything left of the red line, that is the completed work. The major component of the work that was done was actually a new overpass at 150th Street. You'll see that they also You'll see that they also built a new alignment parallel to Portland, so it minimized a lot of the traffic disruption. There was some, but it minimized the disruption with a lot of commuting traffic on this corridor. This is what that new overpass looks like. It, it's obviously significant. One of the advantages of a grade-separated overpass is that there's about twenty-seven-thousand vehicles a day that are on this State Highway Seventy-four, this section of Portland. This allows there not to be an intersection or a light there, so it allows that commuter traffic to come cleanly through that very heavily-traveled intersection. This is the only overpass that's planned on the project, so as we start talking about phase two, this was one of the most significant improvements, and I think area residents have already taken advantage. And the work on, on this was about thirty-four million dollars for this section. Now, this next three slides I'm going to show you is the work that's up and coming, and this is going to be the phase two work. This first slide, just to the left, is a hundred and sixty-fourth. What you see in the middle of the page is a hundred and seventy-eighth. This is the first portion of that work. It's generally just a widening of the road and improvements going north, but it also, again, parallels the existing Portland Avenue to make sure that there's as least disruptions as possible. This next slide takes you from a hundred and seventy-eighth to a hundred and ninety-second, and then this final slide takes you on up to two hundred and sixth, with this also Covell Road. So again, as we talk about this, this is work that's scheduled here in future years. We've got about fifty percent of it complete, and the city's coordinating very closely with the ODOT work, making sure that we take advantage when we can. Moving on to the Oklahoma City Boulevard, I think probably the project that's most familiar to the council, five phases. The west section, which we've discussed before, is complete. There are two phases, the east section and the railroad bridge that are under construction. Those projects actually substantially complete this week. ODOT is actually scheduled to open up that east section this Friday at 2:00 p.m., so there's a number of press releases and things that'll be coming out, and I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of coverage. The center section and the transition section, which I'll show you, are still in design, and they're on separate schedules, and I'll update those in just a moment. This is that overall map of the Boulevard, and again, it's a reconnection of the, of the old crosstown, the old I-40, which used to traverse downtown Oklahoma City. And so you see as it goes out to west nearly I-44, Pennsylvania Avenue, as it reconnects to the east on I-35, you're going to see four shades of color. Those are the four distinctive projects and phases that ODOT has taken to construct the project. So the west section is complete, the east section is scheduled to complete this month, the center section is to bid just a little bit later this year, early next year, they're wrapping up some final utility work. There's also been a lot of coordination with the MATS III projects, including the MATS III Park and some of our streetcar project work that's in the area. And then the transition section, which is that last piece, it's between Walker and Western, is scheduled to bid about a year later. Looks like it's late two thousand and seventeen at this point, but it possibly could be early eighteen. Again, they're starting to work on utility relocations. There's also an overpass at that location that they're wrapping up the plans on now as well.
Eric, can I stop you there on the Boulevard?
Yes.
On the east connection, that, that's the intersection at Oklahoma, is that going to be open, or what's the status of that?
So there is an intersection or partial intersection that open, that will be open, but it will not connect to the north. So at this time, we do have an Oklahoma Avenue project that's scheduled to be completed by the City of Oklahoma City. There's been some, some interest by Federal Highway Administration on that portion of the project. We're meeting with them regularly. We had a meeting just about a week ago to work out some of the details. There's some acquisition questions on acquiring some of the property that's east of the U-Haul Building. The plans for that section are done, and we're ready to construct that, but there's some timing and some funding questions that we've yet to answer. As soon as we get the clearance from Federal Highways on that, we'll proceed very quickly.
So to, to access the Boulevard East, you'll have to do it from Shields, is that?
You'll do it from EK Gaylord, yes.
So what about the, the south side of the Oklahoma intersection? Is there any connection there that'll be open?
So at this point, there is not, but we do anticipate future connections, obviously with the potential growth and development in that area. The intersection's going to help service that once there's some determinations made on exactly what it is that the need is.
Okay.
So as we look at that intersection, we need to know is that a, how wide is that intersection, is some of those things depending on the amount of traffic and, and access that we want? But we're prepared to do that just as soon as those decisions are made.
Okay.
So, I mean, to reiterate, there will be a full signalized intersection at Oklahoma Avenue in the final Boulevard alignment. The center section's still not constructed.
Eric, maybe you should poll the council, not today, but sometime in the near future, because in the central section of the Oklahoma City Boulevard, it's my understanding that some of the lesser traveled north-south streets will actually dead-end to the Boulevard. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, that's correct, and it's some of the very less-traveled streets.
Yeah.
But not the major streets like Lee, Chertel, Walker.
Well, my only suggestion, and, and I'm just speaking on myself, and maybe you ought to get everybody's input, instead of completely dead-end to the Boulevard, at least have a right-turn-only-type entrance onto the Boulevard, so especially unsuspecting people traveling down those north-south streets don't have to turn around and go back. If we could just still allow them to have access, but a limited access, and then they could recover and continue their north-south.
Absolutely, and I can update on, maybe a couple of slides will be clear enough that I can show a couple of the, what we'll call mitigation efforts that ODOT has pursued with Federal Highways and the private property owners in the area.
Thank you.
On this west section, I think this is probably the most familiar, if those have traveled off of Interstate Forty and utilized this, there is an access. It says Oklahoma City Boulevard, it's on the eastbound, you can actually exit the Boulevard. It will bring you to Klein, it does put you to Reno Avenue at this point, but you can also use Sheared and Avenue to Klein to get back onto the Boulevard, and that's what you see on the far right-hand side of this drawing. The work is complete, there have been a few questions about the turnover to the city. This is still an ODOT facility, it's not yet been turned over completely to Oklahoma City, but working on that very soon. But again, this is the first portion that was completed just a couple of years ago. This is work that, I'm sorry.
On that portion that's still to be turned over, is there any way to get the lights turned on?
So ODOT is working on it, they're having some vandalism issues, and the wire is being stripped about as quickly as they can get it replaced, and so they're working on a new lockable system that will hopefully lock up those wires to keep them from being pulled as soon as they're installed. But the answer is yes, we do know that's an issue, and we're trying to work with ODOT to resolve that. These are some of the renderings, and this is the rendering that you can expect once we do finish that west section connection. This is looking east over Western Avenue. And so when we talk about the Boulevard, I think we've reiterated, this is a two-lane, each-direction facility, this is not a highway. This is a city street, it's going to be tree-lined, it's going to be very much like our downtown Project One Eighty streetscapes, but it is the Boulevard, and it's going to allow that direct downtown access with a lot of north-south opportunities to get onto and off the Boulevard. As we look at the east connection, and you'll see the, the white spot that's on the drawing just as the mayor had commented, we have Oklahoma Avenue with that connection that is planned to take us from the Boulevard all the way to Reno Avenue. So that is the one piece that's not one-hundred percent completed at this time, the plans are complete, but when ODOT opens the facility on Friday, from EK Gaylord, you will be able to access Interstate Thirty-five, and from Interstate Thirty-five, you'll be able to access EK Gaylord. So there's quite a bit of planning that's gone into this. You will see that a portion to the right is elevated, so it does have to go up into the air to get over the canal, so those that haven't traveled that, you will go up and get onto I-35, much like you used two years ago when there was some access in East Bricktown. The most significant piece of this project, and this was the, the BNSF Bridge construction, this is what you can, could have seen from the air, this is at EK Gaylord looking east, but you can see the mass excavation, they actually dug underneath the railroad tracks to gain that clearance necessary to actually make that underpass. So the railroad remains in place, you'll see here that they had a shoe fly, which is on the top side of that drawing, that allowed train traffic to proceed as normal, but this has been fully restored and reconstructed. The old tracks, we get questions from, from this, the shoe fly will stay in place, I mean, it was planned to be integrated with the Intermodal Transit Hub. This would potentially be the new corridor for the north-south connection for commuter rail, possibly to South Oklahoma City, unto Moore and into Norman at some point into the future, but the tracks that you see there are those shoe-fly tracks that were part of that planning. This is that core section, and so this is the section, EK Gaylord on the right, Walker Avenue on the left, you'll see the north-south intersections, and you will see that Harvey Avenue is not connected at this point on this drawing. There have been some changes. Previously, that was formerly the Convention Center site that was being pursued on the north side, and there was a closure of Harvey planned. What's not shown on this drawing is we will be reopening Harvey as a part of the Boulevard opening, and so there will be construction to maintain access to that street. You'll see that there's some minor driveways, if you look at the south edge of the new Boulevard, you'll see there's a driveway into the OG&E parking lot that was part of the mitigation. There's very few drives on the Boulevard, and no new drives are anticipated, we're hoping that they'll use side streets for access, but there's also one drive that you'll find just east of Walker to access that existing private lot as well. But for the most part, the north-south accesses through this core section have been maintained, and you're going to see those major streets of Broadway, Robinson, Harvey, even though it's not shown, Walker, Hudson are all maintained, and these will be fully signalized. So this would be an example of what one of those would look like. This is Southwest Third, this is right at Walker Avenue. So again, as we talk about the integration into downtown and Project One Eighty, tree-lined streets, much like you'd expect, much like you see today on Reno Boulevard, and, and again, looking for development opportunities and things that would, would come in the future, including the MATS III Park, the Convention Center, and other streetcar private options. This is at grade looking east, of course, this is the Chesapeake in the left side of the drawing, so at Robinson Avenue, you'll find again continental crosswalks and a lot of those things that have been shown previously, all that has been maintained and included in the final plans. This is the final section to be completed, and again, I mentioned that the bidding on this is, is about a year away, so there's a lot of complications in this section, the biggest being the overpass over Western. That's what you see in the two small green boxes. You recall the work that the city council and city staff did years ago to make sure that we shortened that overpass as much as possible. It was originally proposed as a thousand-foot-long overpass, it was reduced to about three-hundred feet, making sure that we had access. The largest intersection right in the middle of the page is Reno Avenue, so there is an intersection at Reno where the Boulevard crosses, and it's at grade and signalized. But you'll see that there are some challenges. One of those is Claussen Boulevard does not reconnect across the Boulevard. We actually transition it, as you'll see in the upper left-hand portion of the drawing, Claussen turns into Western as it approaches the new interstate that's just off the page to the south. But you'll see a lot of the smaller interactions, the small connections, and some of the things that Councilman Greenwood just brought up. ODOT has worked very closely with a lot of the adjacent property owners to make sure that their accesses have been maintained. One of the biggest changes not shown on the drawing and coming out of the public meetings that were held, Chertel and Lee, which are the two intersections on the farthest right, there will be full intersections, even though those show as being separated on this drawing, this is the latest from ODOT, but those are actually connected. So you'll be able to go north and south on Lee and north and south on Chertel across the Oklahoma City Boulevard project. This is that intersection at Reno, it, it is at a kind of a, an awkward angle, so there are some limitations on being able to say, do a left turn in certain directions, but you do have full access and a full intersection that are signalized. And again, we're talking city-street at this location, twenty-five miles an hour, much like you'd find in other areas of downtown Oklahoma City. So those are going to wrap up the four major ODOT projects. We do have two projects regarding the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority that I thought I would go ahead and present today, there's been a lot of questions on these. The first is the Southwest Kilpatrick Extension, and this is that drawing that you see here, I think some of you have hopefully seen this, I know Councilman McAtee is most familiar with this, is it traverses through Ward Three. What you generally are seeing here is a connection from Interstate Forty to State Highway One Fifty-two, so Interstate Forty being nearly at the top of the drawing, State Highway Fifty, One Fifty-two on the lower right-hand part of the drawing. You'll see that there's a, a number of connections, you're going to see some interchanges. The interchanges are what are identified with the yellow circles. So on the drawing, I know they're a little bit difficult to see, some of those interchanges are half-interchanges, some of those are full interchanges. This is a seven-mile project, estimated cost is about a hundred and ninety million dollars, and again, it's, it's promoting a lot of that new access. Four interchanges include Southwest Fifteenth Street, which is the one that's at the, nearly the top, it's a half-intersection with a southbound off and a northbound on. The next one is at Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, it's a half, and it's kind of a complement to the other half that's right there near Sarah Road, but you'll see that they've got two half-interchanges right there at Twenty-Ninth and Sarah. The next is at Southwest Forty-fourth, and then the final one is a full interchange at Morgan Road. And so there's a lot of work that's still underway with this, this is their final alignment, that they're working on design drawings now. The two projects really have the same schedule, they're trying to complete these within about a three-year time period, so we're talking two thousand and twenty as what they're shooting for as a completion date. Now, obviously, they don't have construction underway, and there's some other works in progress. The most challenging part of this project is the crossing of Mustang Creek, which is identified with under the yellow area or orange area nearly in the middle. They're working on the overpass and the construction, floodway mitigation and on all those parts of the project. This is the eastern Oklahoma County Turnpike, and so as we turn and look into what's part of Ward Four, the majority of this is actually, it's twenty-one miles of, of work. There's only about-
Ward Seven.
There's only about two of it that's in Oklahoma City at the very bottom of this page, and so Interstate Forty at the bottom, the Turner Turnpike at the very top, so just about two miles right there near the bottom is all that is in Oklahoma City. There's one bridge required on this section, there's been a number of protests from property owners on this, and so I know that OT, OTA is, is challenged, and so they're working through those issues with various property owners. So this is just east of Luther Road, so to give you some bearing on the connection to Interstate Forty, it's just immediately east, where there's going to be an interchange at Luther, and then for approximately two miles, it's in Ward Four, and then goes north and up to the Turner. So those are the major projects, and so I put onto the screen, there is a list of projects on the ODOT website at www.o dot org. There's also these two web addresses, pipass.com and drivingforwardok.com, that are the OTA points of, of access. As we look at the next slide, ODOT's probably biggest piece of information that's on their website, and this is what their website looks like, is they have just recently published their eight-year plan. So moving on to the next slide, this plan looks like this, this is what Oklahoma County looks like on that plan, and you're just going to see all of the blue crosses are all those individual projects that are located just in Oklahoma County. They publish this predominantly for the City of Oklahoma City, for us to coordinate our work, but this is online, so if there is a councilman or a, or a resident has an interest in some of the other work that's underway, it actually shows you the funding, it shows you the year anticipated for construction of each of those projects. Now, Canadian County is affected as well, this is the Canadian County project list, and so again, for those residents possibly in Ward Five that are interested in the work that's along Interstate Forty-four through Ward Five, you'll find those on this drawing. There is some work around Southwest Eighty-Ninth that's planned, but mostly this is work that is more affecting the other areas of, of Cleveland County, especially Norman, the Lindsay Street, the Main Street, and a lot of the improvements that are down there. OTA's website looks like this, and again, they've got project schedules, they've got opportunities for public interaction here, and that's what this website looks like. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have either about ODOT or OTA today.
Eric. David. Just a quick question, you know, do they, does ODOT still have plans to modify the on-and-off ramps at a hundred and fourth and I-44 South?
So as a part of the Southwest Hundred and Fourth project, that was actually part of the Walmart construction that's there. Our agreement with Walmart was that they would provide all of the plans to the City of Oklahoma City to be approved by ODOT and for the city to construct those facilities. At this point, Walmart and their engineer are still working to finish those plans with ODOT, but those aren't yet completed.
I see, but as far as you know, at some point, there will be modifications to the on-and-off ramps?
We would, we would expect that, and that is, that is something that the city is actively working with the Walmart engineer.
Thank you.
I-235 and I-44 construction. If John or I were wanting to come from our wards from far north Oklahoma City down I-235 for a Thunder game, how's the construction going to impact going to the game and coming back home?
You know, I would tell you that it's, it's going to change, and it's going to change as the phases change. I know that PIM and Kristi Jaeger have been really influential in putting onto the city's website a lot of the detour opportunities. I would ask that residents, before they maybe take that trip to downtown, to visit the city's website at OKC.gov and to look at those detour plans. For this weekend, I would, I would like to defer to the website and see what the latest is that we've received from ODOT, but, but generally speaking, you can get through the area now, it's just slow, so there's obviously alternate roads. Any, any of the other north-south streets other than I-235 would be advisable.
Thank you.
But ODOT will keep two lanes each direction through, through the construction?
Yes.
Yes, as there is now.
I'd heard one time, something was going to be one lane at night after six p.m.
Well, that could be, that could be during some restricted times, yes.
All right, yeah, Larry?
Eric, where do we stand on legal hindrances as far as the turnpike is concerned?
You know, I, so this is, this is information I've received from OTA. I believe that they're progressing very well on the, the Southwest Kilpatrick Extinction. I think things have gone reasonably well on the west Oklahoma County work. On east Oklahoma County, they're extremely challenged, and so I think if you'll visit And so I think if you'll visit the OTA website, you'll see there's a complete write-up from OTA there on their current status, which it looks like there may be a few delays on that east. We're waiting to see some final plans. I mentioned Mustang Creek was a big challenge for them. I think that they're mitigating some of the property owners, but I believe that they're working with individual neighborhoods. We're not directly involved with that. So from a City of Oklahoma City perspective, we're really monitoring, receiving a lot of information. They are committed to keeping us updated, though. So, but I haven't received any more than just that to date.
And only a slightly related matter. We talked at one time about having Pike Pass work with COPTA in the parking garages. Have we moved forward on that, or are we still looking at it?
We need to touch back with it, because when we checked before, it wasn't a workable situation at that point in time.
Yeah.
So we need to check back and see if situations have changed.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome. Next up is we have some CIP presentation. Doug Dollar's going to introduce it this morning.
Right, a couple of meetings ago, we introduced the five-year CIP plan. It's $2.8 billion, $2.8 million, $2.8 billion worth of construction. And we've got a couple of departments here today to present the projects that they have at. Two of the major departments, airports and utilities, kind of go through theirs. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll have public works in parks. Currently, the planning department is reviewing the plan. They're expected to vote on that on Thursday, and then we'll bring it back to you all for final approval, probably in two meetings from now. So with that, I think we've got airports here. I don't, you guys want to go first?
As airports are coming up, these two departments today, airports and utilities, are enterprises. And so they fund their operations as well as almost all their capital, or maybe all their capital, with their own resources. They're not using general obligation bonds or other city general fund dollars to fund their capital needs.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you, Mr. Couch, Mayor and Council. Happy to introduce our five-year capital improvement program to you this morning. I want to thank Assistant Director Scott Keith and Business Manager Kim Sotomayor and Karen Carney for assisting me in this presentation. This morning, in the summary that I want to concentrate on, we'll talk about how we identify our projects by location and by type and also by funding source. If you look at our capital plan for the next five years, you can see the first four years are fairly consistent with the amount of funds that we are going to be projecting for projects. The last year, obviously, is kind of more difficult to plan out for, and it's more of an outlier. But for current projections are $275,400,000. If you look at the summary of projects by location, clearly, Will Rogers World Airport gets the lion's share of the capital projects, almost $215 million, followed by Wiley Post Airport and Clarence E. Page Airport. Although Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center, the FAA, is on the Will Rogers World Airport, I call that out separately because it is a major line of business for us. Almost $44 million we're projecting in the next four years. I'll talk more about that. When you look at our projects by type, we'll start at the top of the page on equipment. And this is equipment that we are planning to purchase, such as snow blowers, field maintenance equipment, our parking shuttles, and fire trucks. We're projecting about 39% of our projects will be related to the terminal expansion, and I'll go clockwise here if you follow. This is, again, related to the terminal expansion project that we're in design now on. Our parking facilities, this represents our surface lots and our parking garages, and also new facilities that we may be constructing in the future, and various improvements. Buildings, 15% of our projects are related to those improvements and maintenance and infrastructure for trust-owned buildings, typically on less or our lessor responsibilities and lease agreements, our roofs, structure, and exterior. It's also very heavy with regard to mechanicals, such as plumbing and electrical. Our airfield projects mainly consist of taxiway and runway reconstruction or rehabilitation, also typically includes airfield signage and various other pavement improvements. And then various infrastructure, 11% of our projects. Now, the airport, often to facilitate infrastructure improvement or to facilitate development, we may construct our own roads and pavements. We sometimes construct our own water and wastewater facilities. And looking at our projects by funding source, again, starting at the top and going clockwise, 10% of our projects will come from the FAA's Airport Improvement Program. Because of our number of boarding passengers that we have at Will Rogers World Airport, we typically get about $4.7 million from the Federal Aviation Administration that we can use on runway and taxiway projects at Will Rogers World Airport. For the general aviation airports at Wiley Post and Clarence E. Page Airport, typically those projects compete with other airports and also by projects to determine whether they're eligible for funding. For Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center, 16% of our projects will be paid for the escrow account that Mike Monrooney, the FAA, pays about $12 million into an escrow account. And from that, we basically do a lot of infrastructure and capital improvement projects. In fact, I have four people just dedicated for those projects for the FAA. 30% of our project will be related to the passenger facility charge funding, and again, this is for the terminal expansion project. And it's also to pay for the recent checked baggage inspection system that we did last year and completed. And then 44% of our projects will be funded just from general revenues from the Oklahoma City Airport Trust. To talk about some of the ongoing projects that we have now, we have just started the early site package that precedes the terminal expansion. This is a project that eliminates the barriers that we have to do away with so that we can add on to the east end of the terminal building. This is to demolish the cargo building, which is a vintage 1960s building, and it's also to relocate various utilities. We have water and wastewater, as well as two private telecom utility companies that we've worked with and have agreements with to relocate those utilities. About an $8 million project with architectural and engineering and construction, we have about $550,000 that are in this budget for FY '16 to complete the Taxiway H project. This is the north and south ends of Taxiway H. A few years ago, we completed the center portion. This is the furthest east taxiway, which is on the airfield, and it is a project that takes the asphalt, converts it to concrete, and it will allow it to be more weight-bearing for the larger aircraft that we anticipate using on the east side of the airport. We are about 70% complete with our signage project. This is to overhaul all of the roadway signage and the garage signage at Will Rogers, about a $4.5 million project. The terminal signage that we also have that's going to be redone will be, in the existing terminal, will be redone when we do the terminal expansion. We're underway with a parking access and revenue control system upgrade. The system that we have today is very obsolete. We can't get support for parts or service agreements. This replaces all the infrastructure that we have for all of our parking surface lots and garages, such as the ticket dispenser that you see today. This system will allow us to have more capability, will be able to track our activity better, a better revenue control, and it will allow us to have several amenities with our new parking system, such as pay-on-foot kiosks, and we'll have AVI tag readers, and we'll also be able to do space by space or level by level counts in the garage, and that project is just kicking off. The terminal expansion project, we've just finished our 60% design, and we're about to start into construction documents. Just to remind you, this is to add on to the east end of the center terminal that we have today, and it's the beginning of a concourse that eventually will have nine gates. We're currently projecting four gates, three airline gates and one larger airport gate for use. The main goals of this project are to increase gate capacity. We only have one gate left that's not leased by the airlines, and our long-term planning says, think about expanding when you get to one gate that's not leased. We also have a security checkpoint that will be improving passenger processing, so we're going to be deleting the two checkpoints that we have today, turning those into very nice meter-greeter lounges, and then creating that eight-lane checkpoint that will set us up for the future. We also want to improve passenger circulation. Station 2, I know many of you are familiar with this. This is a problem that we've had for a long time, and this is under design now, so we should be entering into construction after the first of the year. This is the Station 2 parking and Garage A. This is the first set of escalators you come to when you exit the tunnel or exit the terminal going into the tunnel. This is a very narrow escalator. As you can see, it's in very poor shape. We looked at lots of options to improve this area, and what we're planning to do is construct a larger elevator. We have problems with medical gurneys being able to get down to respond to medical issues, so we'll help with a larger elevator. And we, you may not remember or recall this, but we have two elevators also already in this area, so the project will actually renovate those two as well. So we'll have brand-new three elevators that will be able to handle the passenger traffic We have 39 escalators, elevators, and moving walkways at the airport, and we're reviewing a status report now so that we can prioritize the escalators and elevators particularly that we need to change. We'll be budgeting about $400,000 a year as we prioritize these repairs. We have airfield improvements for Phase 2 at Wiley Post Airport. This is a $4 million-plus project, and this is basically at Wiley Post, we're completing runway 35 right and 17 left, which is the main runway. This project is nearing completion, should be finished by the end of the year. Wiley Post Airport is almost getting a complete overhaul on the airfields. We started on the west side with Phase 1, and we're completing Phase 2. And, next slide, please, Karen. And now we'll be going into Phase 3. We have a grant today for Phase 3 from the Federal Aviation Administration, and on today's agenda, you approved us going for a resolution to get some state funds to help us with this project. These improvements specifically will be to improve Taxiway A and Taxiway B, which are the parallel taxiways to the main runway that I spoke of before. We'll also be doing some associated signage and lighting upgrades. Also at Wiley Post Airport, the red runway here that you see is runway 17 right and 35 left. This is a runway which is only 5,000 feet long currently, and it's only 75 feet wide. For the type of aircraft that are using Wiley Post Airport, we really do need a more adequate alternate runway. So the plans are, first, to widen this runway from 75 to 100 feet, to increase that margin of safety for aircraft that use that runway. At Clarence E. Page Airport, we have a couple of improvements planned. It's called an AWAS-3, which is an automated weather observation system. As you know, Page Airport is an unattended airport, does not have an air traffic control tower, and so this system that we have today and that we will be replacing allows pilots to call into a frequency and get real-time weather, so it's a safety issue. Also plan to reconstruct Taxiway Alpha, which is the parallel taxiway to our short parallel runway, anticipating $2 million. And also looking at doing some perimeter fencing at Page Airport. I mentioned Mike Monrooney, significant line of business for us. They lease 1,000 acres from us at Will Rogers, and we're very proud of the relationship that we have and the work that we do. And this is just a grouping of projects that we have on the 27-plus buildings that we manage over there and maintain. So various electrical and mechanical improvements of about $13 million. Lots of building improvements, over $21 million are projected. And then finally, we have streets and parking and aprons that we'll be working with the managers over at Mike Monrooney to do better pavements over there, about $10 million. And that's all I have for you this morning. I'd be happy to entertain any questions on the presentation or anything else you have in mind.
Will the expansion bring more direct flights to Oklahoma City, or will it bring new airlines that are currently not servicing the city?
We hope both. We've had good recruiting experience over the last few years. As you know, the airlines have consolidated a lot over the last few years. There's really only five major carriers that are out there, and we have all of them at Will Rogers. But we're still actively recruiting. There's JetBlue that we talk to from time to time, there's Spirit Airlines. One of the things that I'm encouraged with, I know we're in a little bit of a downturn of an economy now, but we know that that will change, and that's why we're leaning forward with our terminal expansion. We know that there's a new convention center which is being planned, and one of the byproducts of a new convention center, one that's larger and can attract larger conventions and more people, we hope will be more nonstop flights as a byproduct of that. So we want to keep moving forward in as much as possible. We are working through a process to see if any of our existing carriers might want to relocate into the new section, and so we're working on that now.
Thank you.
Meg?
Two quick things, these are really in the weeds. I'm not trying to run your business, but just two observations, because I've been lots of airports lately. Is there any consideration as you expand the terminal to a more full-service restaurant-type operation outside of security?
The issue with outside security is one space. We don't have a whole lot of lobby space. The pre-security concession that we have today, it's gone through several evolutions as to what works as far as the product line. And what we have today has been there for a long time, longer than any other option that's available. But really, it's a matter of space. And people today, if you have a facility that's laid out that way, it makes it very easy to put in a pre-security concession. Most airports that have those have had that layout for a very long time. We don't have that luxury, so for us to create that could be very, very expensive for us to do, and we don't have an opportunity to do that at this point. Most people do still prefer to get through the ticket counter and get through security and prefer to have their amenities on the secure side so that they can, you know, relax and wait for their flight and be comfortable.
This is more or less for people that are there waiting to pick people up and to, you know, or if you have an extended period of time from the time your flight would land. Anyway, just an idea. And the second is another random thought, but I use that tunnel all the time, and I love the improvements, you know, in the window space, that we've got fish and various. We have such an illustrious history of air and space things in our state. You know, I just wondered if there might be an option to replace fish with aviation or something that would relate a little bit more to the place that we're in. Just a comment.
I appreciate the question. One of the things I'd like to mention is in the meter-greeter lounges that I mentioned, there could be some concession opportunities in those areas as well, because they're going to be essentially the security checkpoints that we have today, so if you can visualize that size.
All right. Other questions for Mark? Exciting times at the airport. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chris Browning. Sam, who's going to give the presentation today. Sam Semandy, Engineering Director for the Utilities.
Good morning, Mayor and the Council. I'll be making the presentation today on the five-year capital plan for the utilities. Our capital plan is actually made of three different parts: water, and the wastewater, and the solid waste. We start out with the water capital improvement plan. This particular slide shows essentially what Oklahoma City has in terms of water supply, treatment plants, and the distribution system that it has for serving all of its customers. The two water treatment plant out in the south part of the city, Draper Water Treatment Plant, receive its water, the raw water, from southeast of Oklahoma through the Otoco Pipeline. And on the north-west side of town, Hefner Water Treatment Plant receives its water from the North Canadian River, and also that water from the North Canadian River also fills up the Lake Overholtzer as well. Oklahoma City has three water treatment plant, Hefner, Draper, and Overholtzer in the middle of town, and it has about 3,700 miles of water mains throughout the distribution system. That includes a small and large diameter pipes that serves the city. Our five-year plan, as you can see, adds up to about $988.2 million on the average, is about like, close to about $200 million a year. As you will see, mostly it's related to the endeavors that we have on providing Oklahoma City a raw water supply. To give you an overview of the CIP, usually we try to take care of five different categories of infrastructure that we have. We want to make sure that we're never far behind in terms of making sure that the neighborhood projects are done, that's replacing very old deteriorated pipeline. And also making sure that water gets to the distribution system through bigger lines with the transmission mains that is required to deliver that water. In addition to that, we want to make sure we have enough storage and pumping in the system to deliver the water. And all of that goes back to making sure that the treatment plants are also up to par and have the capacity to treat the water that comes to it. And then, most importantly also on this particular capital plan, is the raw water supply infrastructure that needs to be added on to the plant. This particular slide shows you, just in one glance, where we are on the southeast part of Lake Draper. You'll see a line coming in. That's the second Otoco Pipeline that is proposed to be built within this capital year, capital plan. And then also, the center of the Oklahoma City will need additional pump stations and pipelines to deliver water from one side to the other. That is from the Draper Area Service Area and the Hefner Service Area. If you look at it by type, the raw water portion of the capital plan makes up the majority of the money. It's about 59%, 500 and... It's about 59%, $584 million worth of capital improvement there. That's for the second Atoka Pipeline and the rehab of the existing infrastructure on the existing Atoka Pipeline. And the remaining part of the capital plan is proportioned to the treatment capacity improvement that needed to be done at the plants and working on the distribution system and adding transmission mains to the heart of Oklahoma City. And then also we're adding and rehabbing pump stations and adding storage facilities. Those are a smaller portion compared to the raw water supply, but that constitutes everything that we have planned for this capital plan. The neighborhood main replacement, we plan to replace approximately 10 miles of that stuff per year, somewhere around $36 million. On the transmission mains, that's a little bit more, because it's a big pipelines and it's about $136 million. Of very importance is the interconnect project between Draper and Hefner. And then also complete the extension from Hefner Water Treatment Plant out to the west of Oklahoma City. And the other one is the replacement of existing 72-inch concrete pipe. It's an old concrete pipe that breaks once in a while, and I'm sure everybody's heard about that in the past. So the idea is to replace that and add a lot more resiliency and reliability to the service that we provide. Water storage and pumping, this is also really important for us, because we have some of the booster station that we have in town, they're a little old. They need to get upgraded. And then also add additional storage to our system. And that's about $64 million worth of improvement. Other than the Atoka Pipeline, this is probably the second most important type of project that we're doing in Oklahoma City, interconnecting the two service areas, the Hefner service area and the Draper service area. This is really important in terms of when you have droughts, because the raw water supply in the north part of town is not very reliable during droughts. So we want to be able to provide service and water to everybody in town through the southeastern part. So we have to build those infrastructures to accommodate that. And also, if you have unforeseen catastrophic events, like big weather events, a tornado or something, if one of the plant is out, you want to be able to go both directions and serve the people.
Will the interconnection be completed?
The interconnection, the majority of it will be connected in this capital year. It's intended to be completed within 10 years. But the majority of it, if you see on the west side, that goes on council area, that's going to be completed within this fiscal year, this capital, this five-year plan. So as part of this interconnect, we're building two major booster stations, one on the east and one on the west side, shown on this slide in red boxes. And then we're also going to convert the Overholtzer Water Treatment Plant into a high-service pump station. Once all of these connections are made, that can be done. So to us, this is really, really important, because it adds a lot of resiliency and reliability to the service that we provide. On the treatment plant, these pictures show some of the major treatment plant projects that we are doing right now, and they're to be completed by the end of this year. We're working on Hefner Water Treatment Plant, building a chemical facilities, chemical buildings. And we're adding an auxiliary pump station at Draper that provides a high degree of resiliency for us, because we already have a high-service pump station. This is another one. It increases the capacity of serving the distribution system to 150 million gallons a day. And then we're also adding sludge facilities at Draper Water Treatment Plant. That's supposed to be completed by the end of this year. As far as this capital plant, some of the highlights of the work that we're doing at each plant, at Hefner Plant, we're going to improve the electrical loop around the plant. That's really important for us. And then also, we're going to upgrade the ozone system and increase the treatment flexibility. That's really an important deal for us, because it allows us to treat at lower capacity. Most treatment plants are designed to provide high capacity of treatment, but we want to be able to also work on a range of flows, let's say 5 million gallons to 100 million gallons. The treatment plants are designed usually for 20 or 30, as we have them. So this allows us to go on lower capacity. And then also the lime system. The lime system is very old, and it needs to be totally upgraded and increased in capacity as well. On the Draper Plant, we are replacing the low-lift pump station. It was built about 50 years ago. It's very old and it needs to be totally replaced. And then adding a lot of clearwells, additional clearwells, to increase our storage capacity of the treated water.
Low-lift pump station gets the water from the lake to the plant.
Yes. And this is for about $143 million. As I mentioned before, the majority of the capital plan is on this raw water supply. As you may have heard, we've been working on this Atoka Pipeline for a while now. So the engineers have been retained to work on the various segments of the Atoka Pipeline. That design work is in process now. And we plan to build this second Atoka Pipeline in this capital plant. On the raw water supply side, as I said, there's also, we need to pay attention to the existing water line that brings in the water from Atoka. We need to add surge protection improvement facilities and replace the old steel balancing tank at each one of those pump stations. And as you can see, the first picture on the top shows the existing Atoka spillway that's been damaged substantially during the rains, and it's been washed out quite a bit. So it's one of our bigger projects to make sure that that facility is upgraded and is protected, because the Atoka pump station sits just right about 100 feet west of that little chute that you see. So it's really important to make sure that that stuff is taken care of. And then, of course, the Atoka Pipe, the second Atoka Pipeline. The design is underway. We hope to begin construction in 2018, early 2018. And we're working on the environmental studies currently. We think it's going to cost somewhere around $584 million. The total plan is about $988 million for the water. On the wastewater side, this particular slide shows all the major important wastewater sewer basins in Oklahoma City. The biggest one, of course, is shown in green, is the North Canadian Basin. And the next one right next to this is the Deer, Deep Fork Basin, which pumps through what we call a Richard Pump Station into the North Canadian Basin. Our biggest plant is at North Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant on northeast part of town. And then we have three more major wastewater treatment plant, one down south is the South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant, and up north we have Deer Creek and Chisholm Creek. And then we have about 3,000 miles of wastewater lines or mains in Oklahoma City. To give you an overview, we'll try to touch four different categories of work to make sure our system, our collection system is up and running all the time. So we're going to do some sewer main replacement in neighborhoods, make sure the old lines that are deteriorated or rehabbed or replaced, and also make sure we have enough capacity in our collection system to carry the flow that comes into it. So we add relief mains to the system. And then we want to make sure that all the lift stations that we have are working properly and are able to lift the wastewater. And then also, we want to make sure the plants have plenty of capacity to treat all the water that comes to them. The capital plan for the wastewater, as you can see, is somewhere around $285 million, around $57 million on the average. This particular slide shows where we plan to be in terms of relief lines and all the major pipeline work and the pump stations that we've got to do. If you see on the east side, we have a small wastewater treatment plant called Dungy. It treats a very small amount of water. We are converting that into a pump station and getting rid of the plant itself and pumping it all the way to North Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant. That will be done hopefully this year. By type of projects, the wastewater pipe, the divvies up into treatment plant, the majority of work is on the treatment plant side, about 54% of the work, $134 million almost. And the second biggest chunk of the CIP is on the interceptors. These are the relief lines we're talking about. These are large diameter pipes that parallel existing lines to carry flow. And then, of course, the pump stations and the other improvements within the collection system that needs to get done. We're also embarking on a wetter-of-flow management evaluation and improvement. That's really important, because every time we have huge rainfalls in Oklahoma City, we want to make sure what is the right way to carry or treat this additional water that gets to us. So we make sure the plants are not inundated and the collection system is not causing sewer backups and stuff. So this study hopefully directs us into a better way of dealing with that. Sewer reconstruction, replace and rehab old sewer lines in town. Another big project that we have is the separation of combined sanitaries and a storm system at Stark Yard. That's probably the only location in Oklahoma City that's got a combined system, and we need to make sure that that's separated, because it adversely affects the capacity of sewer lines downstream of the facilities. And then also, we have budgeted additional work to cut, to abate the infiltration into this sanitary sewer system. Sanitary sewer systems are designed usually to carry the wastewater that is generated in the system and a little bit of, what do you call it, inflow from a storm or groundwater and stuff like that. But they're not designed to carry storm sewers. So we want to make sure that our system is improved all the time and buttoned up, so there is no leakage into or out of the system. So we have about $22 million to help with that effort. As I said before, the, we need relief lines, so we'll be working in two basins mainly, the North Canadian Basin and South Canadian Basin, to install large diameter pipes to help with that. That's about $77 million. Lift station improvements, as I said, we have a lot of old lift stations that need to get upgraded. We have about $10 million allocated for that stuff. What you see a picture of, if you go back, ah, thank you. This is a picture of a new backup electrical generator at the Richard Pump Station that we have recently installed. You know, we, as a big project that we did in the past couple of years, was trying to protect the Richard Pump Station. So, because in the previous huge rainfall in 2010, it essentially inundated the Richard Pump Station. So we built a dicking system around it, and it worked great under the previous huge rainfall that we had in 2013. So as part of that project, we also installed electrical backup system to make sure that the system runs. The treatment plant improvement, this is a very big project for us in the next five years. The existing capacity of the pump station is about 6 million gallons a day. We're almost touching that capacity right now. So this project that we have is going to increase the capacity of the treatment plant from 6 to 9 million gallons a day. And it also allows us to treat the wastewater that comes up with a higher stringent requirement that is being established by DEQ that we need to comply with. So this is a big project for us. Wastewater improvements, we're going to do electrical upgrades on all the plants. And at Chisholm Creek, we're particularly going to change a bar screen and then improve the disinfection system there. And there's some work in terms of rehabilitation of various items at Deer Creek that we have to, we have to keep up with. But with a form evaluation, we talked earlier about that, that's a really important project for us to do. And then we have money budgeted for order control issues at my arise, somewhere around $120 million. The total is $285 million on the wastewater side. If you put both of those together for the awkward side of the ledger, you're looking at about $1.2 billion worth of capital improvement projects. On the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistant Trust, OCT, we have about $18.7 million to buy capital equipment, trucks and vehicles that you see there, and also buy about $19 million worth of cars. The total capital plan is about $37.8 million for OCT, and somewhere around $7.5 million on the average. That brings me to the end of this presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, yeah. Have you, I think it's Stillwater is converting their elevated tank holdings to solar, to the electricity coming from solar on top of the, is that anything we've looked at?
No, we don't have anything.
So I thought of something else on the legislative agenda. What many cities across America are doing is they're electrifying their pump stations with solar. And they partner with a private company that then is able to take advantage of the tax credits and the accelerated depreciation. You can depreciate everything in five years instead of normal. Well, Oklahoma's one of the few states that to get electricity has to come from a utility company like OG&E, and so they don't allow that kind of relationship. And I just think that's going to leave us behind. I don't know. That's just one more thing for the legislative committee maybe to look at. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, the legislative committee takes that up.
I'm, write it down.
Write it down, all right. Anybody else? All right, citizens to be heard. I'll ask people to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Good morning, Paula.
Good morning. Mr. Mayor and honorable council members again. I always want to thank you for the opportunity to be heard about our concerns. Today was a good day to be here. There's some interesting information on infrastructure improvement for water, some for wastewater. I'm not hearing anything about sludge yet, but I did hear something about this Draper facility. I'm going to make some calls, learn a little bit more, because I want to get myself as educated as I can. I got the press release last week that invited citizens' remarks on ideas for infrastructure, geo-issue, bond issue for next year. So I'm going to be first on the list. I got some ideas. It's going to cost us a little bit, plus some, but I think it's time. And let me just run them by you. And I read a meeting that Councilman Shadid had hosted a while back with the jelly bean thing. I love the jelly bean thing. And I embrace the more minds we have together. And I love the idea of productive conflict, because if everybody agrees, you don't get very far. So this is all good. It's all good. I do want to say without question, without equivocation, undeniably, I absolutely believe we need to fully gut or retrofit our wastewater system, period, to where we are no longer putting Class B biosolids on our ground, in our air, hovering over our water, not for another single day. That's how I feel about it. So we have demonstrated some health effects to you, the toxic constituents in the sludge, the aerosol transport, contamination to our groundwaters. And I feel like this has got to be a paramount point of our grand, our bond issue. Now, when I looked and when I got the press release late last week, I've not had a whole lot of time. I like to come to you with fact, and I like to do my homework. Haven't had a lot of time to do it. It looks like the last time we made infrastructure sewer changes from a geo-bond issue was in 1974. I could be wrong. There's been some like budget improvements, but as far as a big bond issue, it's been a while. I think it's time. We have spent since that time over $270 million on recreation, sports venues, arts, and I'm all about these things. And I love the work that we're doing to make our city more attractive and more modern and a place where people want to come and raise a great family. You're doing a good job with that. But, and streets, police, fire, safety, those things, always paramount. But I do want us to start thinking about some fundamental infrastructure, because we bring 300,000 people here by 2050. three-hundred more thousand people here by 2050, according to the meeting you had. We still have to have some infrastructure that supports the kind of influx that we are inviting. So, and it looked like about every decade, we're increasing our, our, our population by about fourteen percent. Maybe that's wrong, but I think it's in that. So here, I, I, I'm a visual learner and so I'm a visual communicator. I, I've done, I did a lot of little home projects. Here is our wastewater collection system. Now, the outline obviously are, are the ward system. The, the colored parts is the collector system. We do have four major wastewater plants. All of them produce sludge. These two, right here, green and yellow, through a pump station, all come out to North Canadian. You got your Chisholm Creek, you got your Deer Creek, you got your South Canadian. All of them produce sludge and all of it gets trucked out to here. So, there's something I want you to notice. The bond issue, the people who vote in our bond issue are Oklahoma City residents. They're not people outside of Oklahoma City. So all the people over here who are going to have a vote in this bond issue think the sewage infrastructure is fine, their toilets work fine, therefore it must be fine. The people out here who get the benefit, that's not the right word, of living by sewage, sludge, have not a single vote, have not a single voice in this bond issue that's going to come up. And I'm going to, and I'm going to do some homework. I think I'm, I think you can trust me on that one. I'm going to come back with a legitimate thought, legitimate way, or to, to work on this, but if this isn't feeling good to me, this doesn't feel good. All of these people who get a vote think everything's fine. These people out here outside of our voting area are the ones who even as of today are on tripulox in Britain. This family right here who got a land application, there's about eleven, these orange squares represent square miles. This one gets one land application. That one gets nineteen land applications in a very short amount of time. This is just to kind of show sort of a scatter of where we put sludge. But these people don't get a vote and they live it. And they're like my family and they get sick from it. Their water's affected by it. I think that demonstrates the point here. I feel like we're going to struggle with getting people who actually have a vote in our bond issue to care about this. And I don't mean this insulting. I would say even some of our city leaders don't, didn't even know what sludge was, that we've actually put it next to people's homes. We could take it, divvy it up, put a, a, let's say a quarter ton in everybody's home, maybe a ton in everybody's backyard, so we'd all get a flavor for what we're, what we're, what we're actually doing. I wouldn't wish this on anybody. I don't want anybody to live what we've lived. That's how my, my heart is on this. So here, I'm going to wrap up. I know I struggle with three minutes. This is not a three-minute conversation, doesn't fit on a three-by-five, barely fits in three months.
Go, Paula.
So here's what we're saying. I have seen us get creative if we want a hotel, we want sports venues, we got, we are good negotiators and we're creative in making things happen when it is a priority. And I love that about us. I need help making this a priority to people who are going to vote. Now I'm going to do my part. I'm going to do my part on making it a priority and educate people because this matters to everybody. I also would, would make these two suggestions. Maybe we ask our U.S. senators and our governor to help us write a letter, "Dear EPA, we're going to keep the tax dollars that are generally earmarked for you. We're going to keep them here in our backyard because we're following your regulation and guess what we've wound up with? A big fat mess." So we're going to keep our tax dollars that would be yours until we fix this, till we clean up our ground, clean up our water, and we stop making people sick with it. That's how I would do it. I would also suggest that we go, go to our sludge partners. They are the multi-billion dollar industry, one of the only two constituents that benefit from this practice. There's, there is a way to get the money. We just saw almost a billion dollars in getting clean water to drink. Well, the people who drink this stuff are not part of that billion dollars. And the improvements we're making to our wastewater infrastructure are all about processing more, nothing about getting rid of sludge. I get a little fired up on this. I don't mean it to be disrespectful. I know you live it, I know you care about it. If you didn't care about it, wouldn't listen.
And that's why we allow you to talk. You come well-prepared, you come with visuals. We appreciate all that and we appreciate your passion and thank you for continuing this, this journey and we're all interested to see where it winds up.
Appreciate it.
With executive session, we'll be back.
The council has returned from executive session on item nine P. The council has the option of one or two, and based on what I heard in the executive session, we're going to be voting on item P1.
Yeah, I'd make a motion and we vote on item three one once we can see we will take the action.
All right. All right, cast your votes. It passes seven to one. That's it. That's it. Where's Jaren? Thanks, everybody.
That's it. That's it.